Good evening. Welcome to the April 12th, 2021 Troy City Council Meeting. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the blessings you've given each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to bless us as we work through tonight's agenda in the Troy City Hall, being very mindful of those in the world, in the country and city who are suffering from the effects of COVID-19, whether that be directly or indirectly, recognizing that we are all dealing with over a year now of difficulty and pain. We ask that you be with us as we make wise decisions on behalf of the city this evening and keep us and our residents safe and protected as we hopefully get through this very turbulent time. I ask that you especially be with Jean Stein tonight, our former mayor, who is in the hospital and is in need of additional prayers. We recognize Jean for her outstanding accomplishments for our city and all she's done for good in our city, and we ask that you look over her tonight and as long as she is recovering. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call this April 12th, 2021 Troy City Council Meeting to order and ask for the roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. First up, there are some late additions on the Yellow Sheet for the amended City Council Agenda. The first up is a request for approval of electronic participation by council members. All moved that was resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves Councilmember Hoderick's request to participate in the April 12th, 2021 City Council Meeting via Zoom in accordance with Council Rule Number 21, wire communications by and to council members during any meeting of council. Support. Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve the request for approval of electronic participation by council members as read into the record. Any discussion? It's my understanding that Councilmember Hoderick needs to state where she'll be participating from electronically this evening.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I am participating from Troy, Michigan at my residence.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is a resolution to waive the rules of procedure for the City Council, Rule Number 5A, regular meeting agendas. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby waives the rule of procedure for the City Council, Rule Number 5A, regular meeting agendas to add items on the agenda, Item I-7, Proposed Emergency Declaration Resolution, and Item J-3C, Service Commendation for City Assessor Nina Locari to be presented at the April 26th, 2021 City Council Meeting.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported, I think, by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. It's hard to hear, that we approved the resolution to waive the rules of procedure for the City Council, Rule Number 5A, regular meeting agenda as read into the record and printed in the late middle. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. First on the agenda is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one this evening. C1 is Troy Smart Flex Micro Transit Service, and that will be presented by Robert Kramer, the Smart Deputy General Manager, and Madonna Van Fossen, Smart Oakland County Ombudsman, and Tony Vincent, Director of Transportation, and they are coming in to us live via Zoom. Welcome, everybody.
Evening.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Is that our cue? Okay, great. Thanks again. My name's Robert Kramer, the Deputy General Manager at Smart, and as you heard, we've got Madonna, who's Van Fossen, who's our Oakland County Ombudsperson, and Tony Vincent's our Director of Transportation, and we're here to present about this really exciting and innovative, game-changing service that we are bringing, a pilot of this, one to each county. And in Oakland County, we selected the Troy area based on some studies of the place that this kind of service might be most successful to be part of our initial pilot. And of course, the hope over the next couple of years of running this service is that it will be successful, we'll learn a lot from it, and then learn how it could be applied in other areas as well. But with that, I wanted to turn it over to Tony Vincent. He's really been spearheading this project over the last year, from the time he really learned about what microtransit is, worked it into our fixed route analysis that we did, and now we've got a vendor under contract and the service on the road, and Tony's going to tell you more about how this service works. Tony, I'm going to share my screen and take it away.
All right. Thank you, Robert, and thanks, everyone. I'm excited and glad to be here today. Really excited about this pilot program and the success we think it's going to bring to Smart and also to the city of Troy. You want to jump, Robert, to the next screen. So what is microtransit? You've heard, a lot of people's heard a lot of different types of definitions for microtransit, but really what microtransit means to us and what it's going to mean to the city of Troy is it's a shuttle-type service that's going to pick you up when you want, where you want, with the conveniency of booking a ride on your phone, similar to an Uber, Lyft-type service. And it's going to be, this service is defined in a smaller zone, so we're looking to provide smaller trips in a defined area and really work off of our fixed route service that we have. Troy has great fixed route service. We really want to provide some first-last-mile connections to places that might be a little difficult to serve with a 40-foot bus. The goal and the ideal is to provide service to some of the hubs that we have right now in Troy, Somerset, Oakland Mall, and then have these shuttle-type services pick you up from those locations and then take you where you need to go within the zone. But there's also some flexibility with that, and we can provide service within the zone as well. So if you live on one end of town and want to travel to the other end, you'll be able to do that with this service as well. And then this is going to provide a huge boost in mobility for the city of Troy. Do you want to jump to the next slide, Robert?
Just real quick to add for a second or two, and this was mentioned when we had the press event a few weeks ago, but the Troy Trolley was an initiative that tried to do a little bit of what this is doing, but in kind of a narrower focus in a specific way, and I think that it struggled to have the ridership kind of seven or five days a week, seven days a week because it had some constraints to it. So what we really like about this concept is that it kind of takes the idea of, hey, getting people to and from locations along the Big Beaver Corridor and expands it to be farther afield, but makes it more flexible and adaptable to really be able to get you kind of from a door to a door wherever you might be going. So we're just really excited about this kind of being the next iteration of kind of some of the projects we've worked on in the past.
So Robert mentioned the three pilot zones, one in each county. We have our Hall Road Zone in Macomb County, our Dearborn Zone in Wayne County, and the Troy Zone here that we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. Very flexible service. Robert mentioned we partnered with VIA. VIA is a transit provider slash tech firm globally, has service globally. And what's nice about partnering with VIA is they're providing the drivers, the vehicles, the maintenance, and it's flexible. We really keep hitting home flexible, flexible from the standpoint of service area, being able to adapt, flexible from adding additional service or increasing vehicles as ridership grows, and we really kind of played on that with the name, you know, Smart Flex. Through the pilot, we're gathering a ton of data, really to kind of help better understand some of the travel patterns in the area and then build on that as we go. And we're also building on our fast, I don't know if you hit the slide, Robert, you would see our fast routes kind of show up there. There you go. So really want to build off the success of our fast routes. We provide fast service on our three busiest corridors, Grashit, Woodward, Michigan Avenue. In the Troy area, our Woodward Corridor, the second busiest corridor in our system, great service in the Somerset. This will provide folks who use the Woodward bus into Troy that option of then transferring to some of those hard-to-serve places with fixed route along that corridor for jobs and those types of things. So a little bit more on the Troy Zone. North boundary, Square Lake Road. South boundary, 13 Mile Road. To the east, Dequender, and then to the west, we're kind of parallel Woodward along the railroad tracks up to Adams. Troy has a lot of fixed route service, and we're trying to build on that. So to the north, Troy served by the Woodward Corridor and the Somerset, John R. and Dequender. East and west, through from Macomb County into Oakland County, you have your 15-mile road route and your 14-mile road route. So we talked about first-last-mile connections. We're hoping folks are going to use the fixed bus route, get into the zone, and then transfer with ease to some of these other locations. Services operate, we have here 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We just made the change. We're actually going to operate to 11:00 PM. Frequency and span of service really drives transit, so we wanted to make sure that this was as successful as possible and provide enough span of service to really take care of the folks in some of these service industry-type jobs. A lot of hotels, along Big Beaver, a lot of call centers, not your traditional nine-to-five type employment job. So we wanted to have service early enough to get folks to work who start around 6:00 AM, but bring them back late enough for those folks that are getting off work around 11:00 PM. And really, when we did the launch, we were at the Marriott and talked to some folks from the Chamber. One of the really exciting things that I think they really recognize with this service is working with some of the hotels and either getting people to and from work or people who are staying in Troy, staying at the hotels, having the flexibility to get them to or from restaurants, the sports, the Troy Sports Center, those kind of tournament-style locations. So we really, really worked hard on the service hours and trying to come up with a good span of service to make this successful. And all of our regional DART passes, all of our SMART passes are valid on the flex route. So what that means is if you get on a, you know, you live at 16 in Rochester and you want to go downtown for a Tigers game, you can book a ride to the Smart, on the Smart Flex app, get to Somerset, transfer to our Woodward bus, our fast Woodward, go downtown to watch the game. You're paying one fare. You're buying a four-hour pass, and it's good on all of our services. So you're not paying a fare on our flex route and then a fare on our fixed route. It's the same fare, all the same fare policies will work there.
So what that means, just to put a little finer point on that, is if you had that trip, right, 16 in Rochester, you wanted to go to the Tigers game, it's only going to cost you $2 total. So you're going to book the Flex, it's going to come pick you up, take you to Somerset, or even to the City Hall complex, or any of the stops that are in the zone. You're going to hop on Fast, it's going to take you all the way downtown. When you get on Fast, you've already paid the $2 to get on Flex in the first place. That's going to carry you through. On the way back for your return trip, same deal. When you get on the bus, you're going to pay the $2. When you get, when you're getting toward the end of the route, getting close to Somerset, you're going to pull out your phone, you're going to book the Flex to come pick you up and take you the rest of the way home. You're going to be able to use that pass that you got when you got on the bus downtown, and that's going to count for your fare when you get on Flex as well. So really, it's a great opportunity. And again, this is an on-demand service, so like I said, really, you're on the bus, you're getting close to Somerset, maybe you're making the turn at Woodward onto Adams. You know, you're a few minutes away. That's when you're going to book it, and the vehicle's going to be where it's supposed to pick you up. Within 10 to 15 minutes is really the target time. That's really what we expect to happen. Within 10 to 15 minutes of you booking it, there's going to be a vehicle that's there, ready to take you, and while you're waiting, you're going to be able to see where that vehicle is on the map. So if you've ever used Uber or Lyft, it's a very similar interface. There's going to be information about the vehicle and the driver. You'll know exactly when it's there, and then when you're riding, it's also going to give you the ETA of how much longer it takes for you to get to your destination. Another great thing, too, while I'm on it, is these vehicles are dedicated vehicles. They're all wrapped, as you can see behind me here, they're all wrapped with the Smart Flex logo. This is all that the drivers and vehicles do, so this is not mixed. This is not one of the vehicles that has Uber and a Lyft and a Smart Flex. They're dedicated vehicles. All of them meet the same stringent regulations that our drivers meet as far as safety, drug testing, all that sort of stuff. So it really gives you a very nice service and very convenient, expands the convenience service for a very affordable price.
And just to add on to that, we have a wheelchair-accessible vehicle in each zone. So wheelchair user can definitely book this service as well, which is different from your Ubers and your Lifts. I know a lot of folks who use a chair struggle to book those type of rides. Robert mentioned the ease of the app. Here's a couple screenshots. Really easy. If you go to your App Store, you know, your iPhone or your Android, download the Smart Flex app, create a quick account. It takes probably less than three minutes to download the app, create the account, put in some credit card information. If you want to pay through the app, you don't have to. We are giving away 10 free rides when you download. Your first 10 trips are on us. Once you get the app downloaded, it will, the app, you open the app up, it'll take you to where your location is. So if you're sitting at Troy City Hall, it'll take you right to Troy City Hall, show you where you're at, and it'll have a little pen that you can book from, you can type in your address, and then your destination. So you pick up drop-off location, this middle screen here, and it'll give you your ETA on your trip length or your trip time, and then how quick the bus will be there. In this case, we'll have a vehicle there in six minutes, and it's going to drop them off by 10:03. You book the ride, and then the next screen will show you where you're at. It'll give you some instructions. You might have to walk a few feet here or there. The algorithm on the app will try to make it as quick and convenient as possible, sometimes for the vehicle. So if you're in a large shopping complex, it might ask you to walk out to the main road and stand at an intersection. It'll pick you up from there. It'll give you the time that the vehicle will be there, and it'll also show you where the van's at. So you should look really familiar for those Lyft and Uber users. You can watch the vehicle. It'll notify you when you're there, and it's as simple as that. A couple other things here we have. If you're not tech savvy, you don't have a smartphone, there's still a phone option. You can still call in and book a ride with a reservationist. And then some of our COVID safety measures, you know, all of the COVID safety measures apply. These are six-passenger vehicles. During the pandemic, we're only allowing two riders on at a time unless they all come from the same household. And then all of the passengers and our drivers are required to wear masks because of the federal mandate. All right. I don't know if you want to add anything else, Robert or Madonna?
Yeah, can I just add something really quick just for the council's information? I just came from a presentation that I was giving to the organization on my own, and a lot of their clientele are disabled emotionally, some physically or whatever, and I was telling them a little bit about this, the Smart Flex, and they were very excited about just another transportation option that the residents in Troy are going to have. So they were excited. And I also go to the Troy Hospitality Committee meetings, and we did a presentation there a couple weeks ago, and they were very excited, too, about the potential this service has, especially for restaurants and for the hotels. It could be something like a concierge service that they could offer to, you know, patrons who come to their restaurant or whatever. The restaurant will pick up the tab, you know, the $4 or whatever. So there's a lot of potential here, and I'm very excited that it's in Troy.
And with that, I guess we're available to answer any questions, or certainly you don't know how to reach us if you need any other help. But we appreciate the opportunity to tell you about our exciting new project.
Yeah.
Thank you, Robert. Tony and Madonna, this is the third time I've seen this presentation, including the press event. It gets better and better each time. So I appreciate it. I mean, I'm learning a little bit each morning. It seems like it's going to be a good thing. Any questions from council? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Echoing what the mayor said, thank you for thorough presentation here. As I was, I kept writing down questions as you went, and then you would answer them immediately. I swear I wrote "non-tech savvy user," and then you immediately responded as if you read my mind, saying, "There's a phone option." So you guys have thought a lot of things through. I'm very impressed. My question is, how long is the pilot for in Troy? And then, maybe this is a preliminary question, but what do you see if this were implemented throughout the Smart area? How it would be funded? I know a $2 fare probably isn't enough to cover that, but how do you see that happening? And what kind of data are you looking for in the pilot to kind of decide if it's worth spreading to the whole Smart region?
Yeah, I'll take a shot at that one, or at those questions. So the length of the, we did a competitive solicitation process, and we selected VIA as our partner on this. Again, they have a ton of experience with this type of service, so we were super excited to be able to bring them on board. The contract we have with them is for two years, and then it has a third option year that's at our discretion. So that gives us an opportunity to see how it's going, and then we can see kind of, you know, when we get close to that, if we want to pick up the extra year. What's really great is the way that we built this is there's a lot of flexibility throughout the two-year period. This is not a matter of just, we're going to throw something at it and then kind of just let it sit for two years. The data that we're collecting about ridership, but also things, we had an update meeting today, actually, things like figuring out where people are asking for rides that we can't make. So if someone's putting something in and it's giving the error message that, "Sorry, we can't give it to you because you're outside the zone," we're actually going to be collecting that data, too, and then we'll say, "Hey, it seems like there's a lot of requests that are coming just a little bit outside of the zone. Let's make that adjustment." Or like Tony mentioned, we've already adjusted the operating hours to be a little bit later based on some of the feedback specifically from Troy's committees, but we applied it to all three zones. So it's two years plus an option for a third. That really gives us the time that we need to run it out, make some tweaks and adjustments, and really see how it's going to work. And the reason why we picked those, these three particular zones, like I mentioned at the beginning, is because they were the ones that, there's actually some study certainly about demographics and land use, but we actually also did simulations of these before we selected these to go out to bid, where a vendor was able to simulate kind of what the ridership would look like to see if it's something that they thought could support it. And so that's, we picked these very intentionally and very carefully, and the data that we'll be looking for, again, is going to be things like the diversity of trips. So is it something where only, you know, only office workers are using it, or is it something where only hotel visitors are using it? Because that probably means that we need to change some of the parameters to make sure that it can function many different functions. So that's just one example of what we'll be looking through for along the way. The last question you had as far as the funding, so the pilot, we've been able to fund within our current budget. It's a little bit over, it's about $2.5 million a year is what we're paying for all of the zones together, and that gives us kind of the baseline service, included the startup costs, the technology. We have the flexibility to go up and down a little bit within that, too. If we're seeing lots of success, we could add some more vehicles in. But just like you mentioned, this really is going to be a learning opportunity for us, and as we get closer to, or as we get into the future, we're already going to be mindful of what would it look like? If this is successful and we want to expand, if we want to double the area that's covered by it, or if we want to make it a system line thing, what do the economics look like? How might we fund it? And those are all questions that we're going to continue to work towards so that we're ready to do those things if it's as successful as we hope it will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? No? All right. Well, I thank the three of you very much. We appreciate the thorough presentation, and anything we can do to help promote in our city, you know, we have a long history with Big Beaver Transportation, a trolley you talked about. I'm thankful to see this alternative, and I've talked a little about it on my social media, I think Councilmember Hamilton has as well, but certainly you could probably get some of the rest of us to do, too. I think promotion in our city is, will help a lot, and we're happy to help.
Thank you.
I would say, you said if there's anything you can do, my ask is, use the service and let us know the good and the bad, because like I said, this is a learning experience. So encourage everybody you know to use it. Those first 10 rides are for free, and after that, it's only $2 to go to your favorite restaurant, to the mall, whatever it might be. And let us know. We want this to be the best service it can be, and thanks again.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Good to see you. Thank you. All right, that concludes special presentations, our certificates of recognition. There are no carryover items this evening, so we move on to public hearings. We have one this evening. E1 is a reprogramed Community Development Block Grant, CDBG PY 2018 Funds. That will be introduced by Committee Affairs Director Cindy Stewart, who is on the screen for us. Hi, Cindy.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, we had some money left over from program year 2018. We had $105,082. That was left over after we completed the new roof on the barn at the farm. So Oakland County always has us. We have to reprogram it to another project in order for us to use it. So we are still working on our project at Firefighters Park, and that is to do the ADA-compliant pathway from the parking lot to the soccer fields and the bleachers. So we would ask that council pass a resolution to move these monies from 2018 so that we can reprogram them for the firefighter park project.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions from council? All right, I will open the public hearing. City Clerk Dixon, there's nobody here in chambers. Were there any emails or voicemails submitted?
We did not have any for this item.
Okay. Well, that said, I will close the public hearing then. It was a quick one. All right. Anyone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move E1, Reprogram Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Program Year 2018 Funds, as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal, that we approve E1, Reprogram Community Development Block Grant, CDBG PY 2018 Funds, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment for items on the agenda. Again, there's nobody here in person, but City Clerk Dixon, we, I understand we do have virtual public comments submitted, so I So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have five emails and three voicemails that were received today. The first message is from Natalie Chrysopolous. "I've been a resident of the city of Troy for 23 years now and have seen plenty of changes throughout the years, but nothing has been more disappointing than watching the destruction of green spaces in Troy, particularly close to 19 Mile and Dequinder. The lack of nature will contribute to air and water pollution as well as the displacement of local wildlife. The destruction of Michigan's natural beauty has been going on since its colonization. I urge you to look at Washtenaw County's Land Preservation Plan of Action. I admire their commitment to upkeeping the green spaces in their area." The next message is from Jeffrey Nowak. "I must have complained to our police department about traffic safety concerns over three dozen times now and sadly, nothing ever changes. Some of the dispatchers took a genuine interest in my complaints while others could not get me off the phone fast enough. The roads surrounding and leading up to the square mile bounded by Coolidge, Long Lake, Crooks and Waddles are a giant mess. Speeding, tailgating, unsafe lane changes and texting while driving, we have it all. At this point, I have lost count of all the times bad drivers have almost plowed into my car around here. I notice while driving through many other nearby cities that I rarely encounter similar problems because there is a greater police presence on the roadway. What I have endured on Troy roadways is insulting. It also, it also appears the only way for one to receive a DUI in Troy is to cause an accident, be slumped over the steering wheel or drive recklessly, from what I have been reading in the police reports thus far. I feel like all of my complaints have fallen on deaf ears as I never see anyone pulled over around here. Troy residents and motorists deserve so much better. Please help." The next message is for, from Don and Linda Gottschalk. "Many residents who were planning to attend have decided that they cannot because of the current health crisis. We understand that members can make motions to vote and postpone. We think this would be the most prudent and transparent course as well as what our governor appears to be recommending due to the current level of COVID cases in the state. And to be clear, the subject matter was the Planning Commission hearing for April 13th at 7:00 PM." The next message is from Maureen Bedford. "Many Troy residents are concerned about the rise in COVID infection rates in our area and would like a postponement of the April 13th, 2021 City Council meeting. A large group of us have concerns about the development of turtle woods. It was just brought to our attention and that the person, forgive me, but I cannot recall their name, in charge of the presentation of the plans will not be present to address these concerns. They are not attending because of their fear of COVID. Many of us are concerned. Troy residents should be heard at this meeting and health concerns due during an inflamed pandemic should be reason enough for postponement. Thank you for consideration." The next message is from Dave Lambert. "Thank you to Troy City Management and staff for taking the appropriate COVID safety steps that will allow you and the other city boards and committees to return to in-person meetings. I have the utmost trust in the staff's expertise to ensure that our citizen volunteers and the public in general will be kept safe so that the important business of government can be conducted. As you probably know, there are a couple of proposed zoning text amendments that have been delayed for nearly a year due to the pandemic situation. These proposed amendments propose significant benefits to our residents and the community at large. As you return to in-person meetings, I hope that you will be able to consider these zoning changes at your earliest opportunity." And we have three voicemails.
T-Bat calling from 1094 Robertson Drive, Troy, 48085. Our house is located at Long Lake and Rochester Road, east of Rochester, south of Long Lake in Shallowdale subdivision. I had left a message for respected all council members a few months ago and Teresa Brooks also was there and I was concerned about the shrubs which are growing haphazardly behind my backyard. And council members had decided that you guys will request the builder who has put those shrubs behind my house, they are making my backyard look ugly and you are going to request them, the owner of that place, that they should trim it once a year or twice a year. That will be appreciated if you can talk to him and if he can come and trim before it gets too late, before summer comes. Barty Bat, 1094 Robertson Drive, getting the shrubs trimmed behind my backyard."
Hi, I'm calling about the Planning Commission tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And I noticed they are going to consider the Meadows, which is on Square Lake Road near John R. Now, a lot of people in our area are concerned about that and they were planning on attending the meeting tomorrow night. But now with this current health crisis, people are afraid to go. So I understand that the council itself is the only one that could cancel the meeting. I think a prudent thing would be, I see Michigan Medicine has come out today. The governor is urging not to have gatherings. So I think it would be wise that we could get a council member to bring a motion and have a vote on canceling. Thank you.
Good evening, this is Padma Kupa, State Representative for Troy and Clotson. As a quick legislative update, the Michigan Legislature has not been in session on an in-district work period for the last two weeks. Unfortunately, before the legislative break, the House Local Government and Municipal Finance Committee, of which I am a member, ultimately did not pass a series of bipartisan bills that would have allowed public bodies to meet virtually. The committee hasn't met for three weeks and we are not set to convene this week either. Last month, we were able to provide testimony on House Bills 4159 and 4160. This is legislation that would close a loophole in the law to protect vulnerable adults like Ally, a young person with Down Syndrome from online sexual predators. The bill is waiting for further testimony and a vote from the Family, Children and Seniors Committee. It was a loophole that was discovered by our very own city police department detective and other constituents. If you are a Troy resident and would like to get in touch with me, the best way to reach my office is by email and by phone at 517-373-1783. My staff work remotely at times, so if you are contacting us by phone, please be sure to leave a voicemail and a member of my staff or I will get back to you. When leaving a voicemail or email, please leave your full name, your phone number and home address so that we can easily verify that you are a constituent, document your correspondence and contact you as necessary. My next virtual coffee hour will be held on Friday, April 23rd at 6:00 PM via Facebook Live to discuss community issues with constituents. I will also be holding a town hall on the redistricting process on April 30th at 4:00 PM. Virtual town hall. Please visit my website, kupa.housedem.com to register for the town hall and to view any other upcoming events. Thank you and I hope to see you all soon. Thank you.
And that is all the public comment for tonight.
Thank you, City Clerk Dixon. That concludes those that have submitted public comment either by emailing publiccomment@troymi.gov or by leaving a voicemail at 248-524-3302. Next is an opportunity for city council and/or city administration to respond. I have a few questions and thoughts. I don't know if city management felt compelled to respond to anything they heard first regarding the police situation and the complaint about that or certainly City Attorney Bloom regarding the Planning Commission issues. I know that might come up later in our conversation. And a couple of other things too.
Mayor?
Yes, City Manager Miller?
So I was talking earlier this evening with the police chief and regarding Mr. Nowak, we have contacted him. I guess we could provide that, the more details in a Q and A, but we have contacted him and we have provided patrols and will provide that information to city council.
Thank you, City Manager Miller. I, I'm satisfied with that, counsel on that issue. Does that sound, sound good? Okay.
Really quick, I think we also responded to the, the woman who had concerns about the bushes. Those bushes were required by the site plan and we don't regulate whether they need to be trimmed unless they're an issue regarding a street or a sidewalk. And I don't think that's the case in this situation.
Okay.
But those were required per the site plan, those shrubs.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so that was Ms. Bat, who I had spoken with. It was, I believe in the fall. And we had discussed that we had maybe contact the land owner and just see if, encourage them to potentially, you know, trim those hedges. I don't know if that was ever, ever done or not, so. Because I know it's not technically maybe the city's responsibility, but I think that the city, we had said that we would maybe talk to the land owner and, and encourage them to, to, to trim the hedges because it, it borders her, you know, it borders her property.
Mayor, we, we can double check. I know that we did talk a little bit internally about it and we can get back via Q and A for counsel.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Brooks, what was her name?
Ms. Barty Bat.
Okay. Thank you. City Attorney Bloom, you've heard a few public comment regarding tomorrow evening's Planning Commission meeting. Could you speak to that?
Yes, I, I can just indicate, Mayor, that there are four public hearings and they have been advertised. So at a minimum, the Planning Commission will need to at least try and accommodate and at least start to have a public, these public hearings. So because it has been advertised, we have to give the public an opportunity to comment. So I don't know necessarily, certainly right now, the way that it's advertised, it's advertised as an in-person event, but there are opportunities. We have been very, very encouraging of persons to provide public comment through electronic means or through emails. And we still would like to, to do that as well. We'd still would encourage residents, if they have comments, to provide those comments to us ahead of the meeting. As far as whether or not they will take final action, I can't speak for the Planning Commission. I just know that they have an obligation to at least open the public hearings.
Good, thank you. Do those notices for the in-person meetings, do they include information about submitting virtual public comment as well? Do you know?
I believe that.
They do, yes.
They do, yeah.
Okay. Has it been going everywhere? Okay, so they, they did. I just, and just to clarify, this council tonight doesn't have the ability to postpone a scheduled Planning Commission meeting?
Because there are public hearings that have been advertised, they, they have to move forward.
At least start.
And at least open the public hearings, yes.
Okay. Can the public, or, sorry, can the Planning Commission be given the same information we were given tonight from the, these callers, just so they're aware of our, their concerns?
Yes, Mayor, I forward all of the public comment emails and voicemails to the appropriate departments and Mr. Miller before we read them. The one, a couple of those that we got this evening, so I'll be forwarding those to Mr. Miller and Mr. Savanna.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think for all of us, it's a concern. We'll talk about the public health aspect of it a little bit later, but the, the public comment specifically, there's nobody in person here tonight, but we did have eight different public comment submitters via the virtual means. I don't want anyone in the city to feel that submitting virtual public comment is any less than coming in person. I recognize the value of being able to come in person and especially as it relates to some of these higher profile or more intriguing projects or proposals. So I'm, I'm concerned about that all around, as I have been for a year frankly, and I know that we've been working through those as best we can. But I'm, the other aspect of it is we have, as council, have no, we, we can't dictate what Planning Commission does. We don't even get involved with what comes before them unless it comes to us after, and then it would be, we'd get involved after the fact. So I'm hesitant to, to lean on anyone in Planning Commission by even reaching out and saying, you know, there's people that are concerned about this. You might want to not take action necessarily. But I, so I, again, as long as these messages have been communicated to them and they're aware of that and it's a very smart and reasoned body, so I expect that they'll take everything into due consideration. And, but for those who called in or emailed, I do understand exactly where you're coming from and I appreciate the time you took to submit public comment to us virtually, recognizing you can still submit it virtually to the Planning Commission as well. Additional comments from council? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just had a quick comment to, to first person who commented, Natalie. I didn't get her last name about green space in Troy. I, I mean, I share her concern. I know that I want to preserve what green space we can in this city. This is an issue we hear about a lot. The truth is, we as a city council have limited authority on what we can do to property that we don't own as, as we've experienced. The property we do own and, and the regulations and ordinances we do when it comes to development, we try to do what we can to preserve green space, but we, we only have so much power over these kind of things. And we also need to encourage economic development in our city. So I, I hear your concern and will do, I, I live near that area too, so I know exactly the 19 Mile and Dequinder developments you're talking about. But I, I'll, I'll commit that I will read that Washtenaw County Land Preservation Plan and think about what it says. I haven't read it yet. I do, I'm familiar with some of the things that Ann Arbor does regarding land preservation, but I'll, I'll take a look at that and bring back to council what I can from that. So thank you for your comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was actually going to respond to that same comment, the first one around green space disappearing. And I actually was speaking with my father last night around that. My father has experience in planning, as a land surveyor, also someone who's served on city council, and explained this dilemma that when private developers own land, we have no control over what we can do with that land. But what he said is, what he has seen is land conservancies can actually play a very strong role. So I am really interested. I do want to commit, like councilmember Hamilton, to reading this plan of action for Washtenaw County in terms of land preservation. And I want to commit to learning, what is the history in suburban areas and the history in Troy in engaging land conservancies? Because my father seemed to suggest there is, there could potentially be a role with partnerships and whatnot. So I would like to learn more about that and hope to be in touch with his resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council comment and reply? Councilmember Hoderick, did you have anything? Very good. Okay, so that concludes City Council, City Administration response or in reply to public comment. There are no postponed items this evening, so we'll move on to regular business. First up is I-1 Board and Committee Appointments. I have no mayoral appointments this evening and there are no city council appointments either. So we'll move to I-2 Board and Committee Nominations. I will not be making any nominations, mayoral nominations, this evening. Mayor Protem Brooks, do you have any city council nominations this evening?
Not today.
Thank you. All right, so next up is I-3, A Request for a Closed Session. All moved, be it resolved, that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268A.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Erickson Galt, that we approve I-3 Request for Closed Session as read into the record. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I-4, A Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative Boland Park Site Lighting Distribution Panel Replacement. And it'll be introduced by Public Works Director Kurt Bovensee. Good evening, Kurt.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I thought someone should use the podium tonight, so. Before you is a request for a budget amendment and approval to use a cooperative to replace the electrical panel at Boland Park. This budget amendment is a result of the pandemic. This project was rolled over from the previous year, was delayed because of the lack of contractors available to do it. And now we have found a contractor, but prices had significantly increased since it was originally budgeted essentially two years ago. So that is the reason for the request for the budget amendment. And I know Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga asked some questions regarding the displacement of some of the activities in Boland Park. Unfortunately, there will be some displacement of activities, but we'll make all the proper notifications so people can plan well in advance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kurt. Any questions on I-4? Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll move I-4 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative Boland Park Site Lighting Distribution Panel Replacement as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton and supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve I-4 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative Boland Park Site Lighting Distribution Panel Replacement as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Kurt. Next is I-5 Bid Waiver AT&amp;T Agreement for Various Voice Lines. And this will be introduced by Gert Pereskevin, our Information Technology Director, who is on the screen for us. Hi, Gert.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Nice to see you all again so soon. This particular item is related to about 90 phone lines that the city uses for such things as security, emergency lines, backup telephone service, faxes. Traditionally, these lines have been on an AT&amp;T MyDeal contract through the state of Michigan. However, that contract is predicated on a discount off of current rates. And unfortunately, those rates keep increasing and as a result, the costs keep increasing. AT&amp;T has offered an alternative contract outside of MyDeal with guaranteed rates for the life of the contract, which in this case will be three years, that are lower than what MyDeal currently offers. As it stands right now, the effect of my rate deal would be about $36 per line per month, but will increase as rates increase, whereas the alternative contract would be set at $32 per line. So city management is recommending utilizing the alternative contract offered by AT&amp;T.
Thank you, Gert. Any questions from council? How about the resolution? Mayor Protem Brooks?
I move I-5 Bid Waiver AT&amp;T Agreement for Various Voice Lines as printed in the agenda.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Brooks, supported by Councilmember Abraham, that we approve I-5 Bid Waiver AT&amp;T Agreement for Various Voice Lines as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion this evening? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Gert.
Thank you.
Next up is I-6 Resident Engagement and Priority Study. And that'll be presented by Assistant City Manager Bob Bruner.
Good evening, council. It was back in June 2020 when you approved agreements with Cobalt Community Research to do survey research for the library, resident survey, and business survey. The library survey was done last summer and resulted in a successful new library millage. We caught our breath after the election and worked on the resident survey. City Council provided input on that back in November and December. It was distributed to the community in January. And tonight, William St. Demore from Cobalt is here to present the results.
Great, thank you. Welcome. How are you?
I am doing well, and how are you?
Good, thanks. Take it away.
Okay, let me share the screen and put it onto the size that you can hopefully see on your end the easiest. All right, can everyone see that okay?
Yep.
Fantastic. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the results of the survey. Residents were very supportive in terms of taking time to complete the information for you. And also, you know, the results, I think you'll find encouraging and also actionable. So just a reminder, Cobalt, we're a 501(c)(3). We exist really to do this kind of work for communities across the country. Why research matters, there's really five reasons that you want to keep in mind as you're doing this kind of research and considering it in the future as part of your community engagement toolbox. So first of all, it helps you just keep your fingers on what the community values are for your residents as the residents change, with this demographic shift, as existing residents become older and as new residents move in. It also helps you understand what are the opportunities for improvement. Helps you make difficult decisions as you're trying to optimize the resources that you have available for residents. Helps balancing the demands of open minorities, put those in context in terms of, is this something that's representative of all residents? Or is this something that is more just representative of just a handful of folks? And there are other things that might move to the front of the line. And ultimately, it's something to build trust. And as you'll see in the survey, you do have a high level of trust already with residents. This is a way of really building a foundation to continue to strengthen that in the future. So study goals, certainly does help your strategic planning and budget efforts that are going forward. So that's one of the initial things. We also wanted to establish a baseline service metric so that you can monitor that over time and see how well you're improving and how things shift as the demographic and economic and political environment shift as well. The study also wanted to take a look at which aspects of the community really have the most leverage, not only on satisfaction, but also the kind of outcome behaviors that are tied in with that. And those are behaviors that include things like remaining in the community, recommending to others, volunteering, encouraging businesses to start up in the community, a lot of community image kind of things. All of those are driven by the experiences that they have. And so we'll dive into that in a little bit more detail. We wanted to make sure that you had some context for what's going on with your scores and with the experiences that residents have. So we'll be comparing your results, you know, nationally, regionally, and statewide as well. And then finally, there's a lot of voices in the community. We'll be providing some overall information, but the study is really designed to give you the detailed voices of all of the individual demographic groups within the community. So you can see where those experiences are consistent and where there's some variability that needs a little bit more investigation as you're out there at the community chatting with folks. So let me get to the bottom line. So first of all, you did really well. So you outperformed most of the benchmarks. There are five areas that were particularly closely linked with overall satisfaction and those outcome behaviors that I had mentioned. These aren't necessarily low scores. These are just things that have the strongest relationship with satisfaction of those outcomes. And you can see them listed here, local government management, police services, taxes, schools, parks, and recreation. When we look at top budget priorities, the things that rose to the surface were police services, fire services, parks, and street conditions. These are things that I think you're also taking a close look at as you go into the budget process. Top potential future services and amenities, walking and biking trails came up quite often. Street maintenance was a very important theme, along with farmer's market and a winter sports area. When we asked residents, based on the things that they would like to see developed in the future, would they be willing to fund those particular improvements? And then we gave them a range of different funding options. And about 66% of respondents said, yes, they would be willing to support these kind of improvements. And we'll go into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. When we looked at the comments, as far as what people liked about Troy and things that they would like to see different, people want to see more walkable opportunities within the community. They want to see a walkable downtown. Green space came up in the survey, as well as just, you know, a much richer diversity of small independent restaurants and shops to go around and really understand, experience the diversity that the community has, and have some of the opportunity to have that translate into some of those culinary and shopping experiences. So let me talk about the methodology. So it was 2,000 residents who were recent voters. This is a true random sample, so it mirrors the population as a whole as far as the different demographics. We did the collection in January and February. People only had the opportunity to respond once. We heard back from 492 residents. That gives us a margin of error of plus or minus 4.4%, which is really, really solid. If you look at getting a sample of the entire United States to get plus or minus 5%, you need about 384 responses. So the fact that you have 492 for a community the size of Troy really is very encouraging. In addition, we had the opportunity for folks who weren't part of the sample to share their experiences as well. And we heard back from 255 people, so that gives our total response up to 747. One point of clarification is we did keep the non-sample folks, their responses separate from the sample folks. So when I go over the results today, this is just based on the samples, so that doesn't lose the scientific validity. But the responses of these 255 folks are included in the cross tabs. It was really detailed, color-coded charts that you received on the bottom row, so you can see what the concerns were for that particular group. We did weight results based on age and the details as far as the respondent pattern was included in the detail packet that you already received. So what do you have in the toolbox from this particular report? So first of all, you've got a lot of comparison scores, not only with Michigan, but the Midwest and across the nation, overall and for similarly sized communities. You're also able to compare to non-governmental entities. So often, your residents don't necessarily compare the experiences that they have with you with another community down the street, but instead, they're comparing the experiences that they have with other organizations that they've worked with, whether it's a bank or other kinds of entities. And then, as I mentioned, we've broken all of the individual responses down by demographics. And I'll go over that in a little bit more detail. So this is what those cross tabs look like that were shared in your packet. This is just a tiny, tiny corner of what that looks like. But essentially, every question in the survey has its own column. And then every demographic group has its own row. So you can essentially see for individual questions, how an individual demographic group responded. We color-coded it so that at a high level, you can see red is the lower scores and blue are the higher scores. If a column is pretty consistently red or blue, that tells you that regardless of demographic cohorts, people had a pretty similar kind of experience. If you see more of a mix of the red and blue, that means that there was a bit more variation. And as you're going into your deliberations, if this is something that you're going to take action on, prioritize, then having some additional conversations as you're out in the community to dig into those differences and experiences a little bit more might be a valuable thing to do as part of your broader community engagement efforts. So let me dive into the results. Now, keep this moving along because I know you've got a lot of the air chucked on. So what residents like most about Troy? This is a fantastic thing to read through when you're feeling a little bit blue or beat down. Essentially, we took all of these comments, we put them into a word cloud. So the words that are the largest are the ones that came up most often. Then we took a look at the themes that were surrounding each of those words that came up a lot. So the word school comments were really about, you know, just really quality schools, excellent schools. Safe, people really appreciate the safety of the community, that the police are out there, that they're doing a nice job. Diversity, people really enjoy the diverse culture, the diverse foods, the opportunity to experience these different cultural influences in their lives. So to start building some context, your scores are over here in the far right-hand side. And this is just giving you a quick snapshot of how you compare to different levels. So the U.S. overall for similarly sized communities, the Midwest for similarly sized communities, Michigan benchmark for similarly sized communities, and then your score. This is on a scale of 0 to 100. No one ever gets a 100. So this gives you a pretty good sense of where the scores typically are. And these are average scores. So for the U.S., local government satisfaction is about a 62 compared with 72 for Troy. If we look at community satisfaction, so this is broader based on all the experiences and kind of quality of place, 61 for the U.S., 73 for Troy. Professionalism of staff, 65 for the U.S., 81 for Troy. And then just some additional perspectives that you can look at to get a sense of what those scores look like. The ACSI overall, the National Index, includes the private sector, so it's a mix, and that's a 75. So really, you're within the margin of error of being right in line with the private sector. And that's very important because often, the private sector significantly outperforms the public sector because the private sector can pick a very specific market with a very specific kind of product or service, whereas the public sector needs to serve everyone in the community. And they need to provide a very broad range of services. So the fact that you are right up there is something to be proud of. So let me talk about the benchmarks in a bit more detail. So this is giving you your scores in the kind of the greenish teal compared to Michigan, which is green. So similar size as light green, dark green is Michigan overall. The Midwest, similarly sized, is kind of this pink. And the Midwest overall is the red. In the national, light blue and dark blue. So at a glance, first of all, you're outperforming the benchmarks in these particular questions. And these are kind of those outcome-based behaviors. The area where you're a little bit weaker is planning to volunteer. And you can see you're around a 57 or so. And this is pretty typical, particularly in the pandemic period, we see these scores being pretty low. And you'll see in some of the other questions in the survey that there's certainly some pandemic impacts. We asked what residents like least about Troy? So space. So we've heard that concern come up as far as too much green space being used up, too much concrete. Downtown, people really do want to have a downtown area. They want to have a space for festivals and for community gathering. And for road, the congestion, the number of people. Some concern regarding pedestrian crossings of the roads being a bit unsafe and then dealing with a road repair. One thing I do like to point out about any of the open-ended questions, whether it's things that people like about Troy or don't like about Troy, is that as you read through it, you're going to see certain themes, certain things that are echoed, and it might come up three or four or five times. It's going to embed in your brain. But keep in mind that the open-ended questions really are designed to help inform the statistics and not replace them. So the numbers are kind of boring, but those represent the full 400 and some people in the community, whereas the comments only represent, you know, three or four or five. So just be aware of that as you go through that, that there's these comments. Some of them are challenging, some of them are fantastic. But balance them with what the data are telling you, and it'll help you have a richer understanding of what the results of this study are saying. Okay. One of the things that I'm going to share with you is this particular matrix. And I'll just go into the matrix itself so you can see what that looks like. Essentially, we took the categories of questions and we plotted them out. So we put performance on the vertical. And you can see the base starts at 55, not at zero. So even your lowest scoring area is still scoring pretty well. And then across the horizontal is the strength of the relationship with overall satisfaction. So the things that are the most closely linked are over on the right-hand side. And things that are much more loosely linked are over on the left-hand side. Relative strengths, relative weaknesses. And so essentially, things that are down here in this bottom-left quadrant, these are areas that are slightly pulling down your score. And improving in these areas will drive the score upward, likely to drive the score upward. And things that are in the upper-right quadrant, these are areas that you're doing well, that have that strong relationship. And continuing to do these well or even moving them up will have an overall upward pressure on your scores. Things that are over on the left-hand side, these are more optimized. It doesn't mean that they are not important, but it does mean that you don't necessarily need to put more effort into them to drive community engagement. An example that often comes up is buying a car. So when you buy a car, you might be deciding which model to buy based on mileage, based on styling, based on safety or price. It's not whether or not it has a steering wheel. Things like utilities overall, that's kind of like the steering wheel for Troy. You're doing a good job with it, but it's not the thing that really differentiates you or causes people to move in or move out or to recommend. Compared to something like police and safety, the parks, the schools, those are things that are differentiating you. Okay. Diving through some of these individual questions, schools are a driver. Even though you don't control them, this is having a significant impact on those outcomes that we talked about. Schools are doing really well. They're outperforming. The one area that's a little bit softer is preparation of students for solid careers and communication with the public. But again, these are really strong scores that are in the 80s. When we look at the matrix for just those questions, you can see that communication with the public was the one question that really has the most leverage on driving that score up. And that's an opportunity that you may want to work with schools to collaborate even more because the city likely has a better communication channel. because the city likely has a better communication channel out to the public overall than the schools do, and the schools have a better communication channel out to the parents and the families than the city might. So there might be some opportunity for some collaboration as you're doing a more comprehensive community engagement strategy. Fire and emergency medical, same kind of story, really strong scores above the benchmarks. We look at the drivers. The question on fire prevention and education was the one that has the strongest linkage with satisfaction, and that's something that we've seen drop with a lot of communities in the last year because of the pandemic. Looking at the police, same sort of story. Very strong scores all the way across, including respect for treatment of residents. When we look at the matrix for them, safety education, again, is the one that has the most leverage. That's probably the area that couldn't be done as much in the past year as you might have wanted them to do in the past. Looking at taxes, typically, this is one of the lowest-scoring areas for all of the communities that we work with, and no exception for Troy, but your scores are still well above the benchmarks. The area that was particularly low was communication on how tax dollars are used. So I think there's some opportunity here for you to do a little bit more as far as intentional messaging to get the word out in terms of how that's done. And again, the matrix, we can see the amount and quality of services that you receive, the local taxes you pay, and the communication on how tax dollars are used are really the two biggest elements of the tax category to pay attention to if your score is upward. Shopping and dining, again, very solid scores. All of these are really optimized as far as where they're sitting currently in the matrix. What type of businesses or services would you like to see more of? The word restaurant came up quite often, affordable, family, independent kind of restaurants, businesses, similar sort of themes, so smaller businesses, independent. They'd like to see that downtown business area. And then space, more space for collaboration, for community gatherings, for those kind of things, in addition to green space. Local government management, so there were a lot of questions in this particular category. The pattern, though, holds as what we've seen with the others, that you're outperforming the benchmarks. A couple of areas I just wanted to highlight that were a little bit lower. One is spending dollars wisely, so that is often linked with communications. Then also encouraging citizen ideas and involvement. And certainly, this effort with the survey is one step of a broader strategy to do more of that. Looking at the matrix, you can see spending dollars wisely is one of the lower-scoring areas. That's way over here on the right-hand side, so again, telling the story on that. Being well-managed, efficient, really communicating that out continuously. Openness to resident questions and concerns was another bubble. That's a significant driver, and having leaders who are trustworthy is another one. And all of these are really tied in with the communications kind of effort. One note I just wanted to point out is having leaders who are trustworthy. Certainly in 2020, that did take a little bit of a dip across all of the communities that we worked with, with it being such a particularly contentious political year. Parks and recreation, again, doing really well. A couple of areas that were softer had to do with your recreational programs. So when we look at the quality of programs and the variety of programs, and when we look a little bit more deeply into this, I think these lower scores are clearly pandemic-related. So parks and recs are widely used by your residents. You can see that only about 8% say that they never used them in the last year. And if we look at experience by use, you can see the overall number and then those who've never used it compared to those who are more than 12 times a year with that experience in the parks. The more people use them, the higher the scores. With the recreational programs, you can see that the folks who are heavy users tend to mark you a little bit lower, and I believe that's because these are the folks that are addicted to your services, and with COVID, they weren't able to have the access that they would like to have. Looking at the matrix, you can see quality of recreational programs and variety of recreational programs were the two that were the most strongly linked with overall satisfaction. Library, no surprise, your library scored well. Up or over 80 for most of the scores, a little bit softer on hours of operation, which we saw in the library survey. And I know that there is a path forward to increase that as well. And again, exacerbated by the pandemic. Library use, so about 75% of your population have used the survey at least once in the past year, and you can see, you know, very wide usage. Looking at the library by use, you can see hours of operation. Again, the heavier the user, the lower the score. They want to be able to have access more often. But as far as the adequacy of resources, the quality of programming, the variety of programming, all really strong. We can see hours of operation are kind of down here in this bottom-right quadrant is the area to pay most attention to. We had a number of questions on budget and planning. Wanted to hit a handful of them just to set the top of mind for you. One is when we had them walk through the wish list of potential future services and programs, we asked if they would be willing to fund those. And you can see that only about 34% said no. They don't support additional funding, and the remainder did provide some level of support, most of them at the $5 to $10 per month range to see those particular services implemented. When we look at what those services are, the one that really rose to the top was the walking and bike trails. So the further to the right something is, the higher the percentage of folks specifying that they would like to see that developed. So you can see that the walking trails were over 60%. And from a funding standpoint, which is the vertical, well over 50% willing to pay for those. Number two would be street maintenance. We asked about others, potential future improvements, which you could see kind of down here in this bubble and down here at the bottom, not a lot of folks shared things, but the things that they did were really echoed in some of the prior open-ended comments. More with the park, they want to see more exercise areas and toddler-friendly areas. They want to see a downtown area, more walkable shopping kind of areas, and then more bike lanes and also more turnings. We did dive into athletic space specifically, and for that particular question, a winter sports kind of complex or area is something that came up for skating, for sledding, for skiing, and those kinds of activities, with the majority of folks willing to pay for it and the majority of them wanting it as well. Other athletic space improvements, so trails, walking trails, bike trails, all things that you've seen in some of the other comments. Communication preference, a number of questions along these lines, but just some of the top ones. How do you prefer to receive information from the city? Email is by far the number-one way, followed by the city website and Troy Today. And these do vary by demographic groups, so when you're looking at the details in the cross tabs, you can see a bit more nuance that'll help you choose the appropriate communication channel for the particular message you're trying to send to a particular audience. So implementing results, as you dive into the information and digest it more fully, you'll want to think about your scores, particularly ones that you want to improve, and identify, is this a perception gap or is this a performance gap? If it is a perception gap, it's really something to deal with through your communications efforts and outreach and being deliberate with, you know, providing some information on what is the actual situation with a particular score. If it's a performance issue, then you want to look at budgeting, you want to look at process, you want to look at some of those kind of elements to actually change the experience that people have. And once you've corrected an issue in performance, then it becomes a perception gap, and then you need to make sure you communicate that, you know, the information was heard from residents, that you acted on their ideas, and that this is now performing at a higher level than it had been. If you don't, then people really keep that old perception going. And that's one reason that sometimes longer-term residents have lower scores for the community than newer residents because the longer-term residents might have had an experience that happened long ago, and they haven't experienced anything differently from that. So one of the processes that works well for taking the data and digesting it to go forward, we talked about this probably with the library survey, but I'll go over it again briefly. And you've done the first step, which is the measurement process. Step two is getting into small groups of leadership and identifying what are those things that you want to change, and then asking yourselves two questions and just brainstorming them on a flip chart. Number one, why did people respond the way they did? And number two, what can you do differently? Again, brainstorm those lists out, and then go into step three, which is where you're expanding the conversation to line staff and the residents to say, okay, this is what we're trying to improve, here's some of the ideas that we came up with. And then asking two key questions. Number one, what did we miss? And number two, what makes the most sense? What would be the most impactful if we were to just pick one or two of these to move forward? Step forward, training, making sure that whoever implements has the skills and the tools to actually move it forward. Step five is really the project management side of it, just measuring it to make sure it gets done, and then coming back again to measure it and to move forward. Okay, so that was the rocket tour of the results. Let me pause now and give you the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you so much. Wow, a lot there. Let's not spend hours talking about what we can review, but let's start with questions. Council of questions or comments, but, you know, try to phrase them in the form of a question. Councilmember Ericson-Gold.
Thank you, Mayor. And I had submitted this question earlier. I'm concerned whether, overall, I think this is wonderful. I should begin there and say how great it is to get some feedback. I know we've talked many times on council about how we want to have a more robust engagement of the community to try to get better communication, both, as you mentioned during your presentation, communicating with the public as to what we're doing, but also hearing back from the public as to what their wants and needs and wish lists and how they feel that we're performing. So this is, it's very encouraging, and it's a great start. I am a little concerned about the demographics. I notice in particular, and this is kind of a timely issue, that our Asian-American population, which is really high in Troy, that is not as well-represented. If I did my calculations correct, and I'm a little bit math-phobic, so I'm willing to be corrected, but it seemed like less than 50% of our estimated Asian population showed up for this survey. And I was wondering if what we might be able to do to make sure that the true demographics of the city are represented on this survey. Not this, obviously, this one, but future surveys.
It's a great question. So there's a few things that immediately jumped to mind. One is, you're right, they are a bit unrepresented, well, they are less representative than they could be based on the numbers. To make sure that the voices of that community isn't lost, we do have the breakdown for the Asian residents as a separate line within the cross tabs. So that way, the overall numbers don't wash out what their concerns are, so you can get a good feel for what it is that the community is experiencing with the city. But having said that, to get more folks to respond in future years, there's a few things you can do. One is just continuing to build up a good relationship with the various organizations that work with the Asian community so that, you know, maybe they can weigh in on the survey for the next round. They can certainly get the word out that it's coming and that's something that's credible and is valuable for the residents to take time to complete. So that's one piece that can be done with more community engagement between now and whenever you do the next survey. The other thing that can be done is really oversampling. So we now know from the first survey about what the response level was for that particular cohort. Next time around, we can just be deliberate in adjusting the sampling methodology to oversample to try to get more folks to respond from that particular group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Additional, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again, William. The survey last year for the library was fantastic and pretty much nailed exactly the mindset of the electorate when it came to library millage. So these numbers really do mean a lot to me. One question I had was about the benchmarks. What is the, what was, what year, what years are you basing the benchmarks on? Is that during COVID or is a lot of that pre-COVID? Because one thing I was kind of comparing was Midwest 25 to 100K population. That, to me, is a really significant comparison. So I was curious if those, because I noticed our parks and rec was kind of in line with the whole Midwest, while most of the other things were well above. So I'm wondering, was that, a lot of that benchmark data pre-COVID or is that all from the last year?
It's all from the last year. So over here, we do a brand-new, fresh round of benchmarking and it's representative of the data. The one caveat, normally this doesn't matter, but in 2020 it did, is we did the benchmarking in the summer when everything was starting to open up again and people were kind of relieved and excited that it was happening. And then we got to the holidays when things were starting to shut down again. So I think the psychographics were, the psychology was a little bit different for the two survey periods. Normally, it doesn't matter, but with this crazy year that we've had, I think it may have had a little bit of a impact.
Fair enough, thank you, that's good to know.
You're welcome.
Senator David.
I had a question.
Mayor Proton Brooks.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the survey. This was extremely useful. I really enjoyed, especially reading a lot of the comments that were at the end. Some of the negative comments were actually very enlightening. But one of the questions that I had was, a lot of the demographics actually had the little asterisk that said the cohort has a lower response level, which may increase the variability. What was the threshold for that? Because it seems like there's a decent amount of demographics within that had the asterisk by it.
Sure, it was 30, 30 responses.
Okay, okay.
And it's not that the results are bad or not representative, just from a statistical standpoint. You start having more variability because you have a smaller group of people responding. So if you're looking at the cross tabs, you might see, you know, the people who are 18 to 24, it's a pretty small group. You might see things marked 100%, and everybody else in the other groups are like 85 and kind of clustered around that area. So you get more of this kind of wild variation potentially with a smaller group.
Okay, thank you. And then when I was also reading through the study, a lot of the things that you pointed out, I really made note of as well as far as kind of the communication about how the tax dollars were being spent and how those were like lower scores and how there were lower scores with the spending the dollars wisely, how we spend our dollars. And that really kind of brought back the library study and how a lot of the residents were more likely to support the millage when they felt like they understood what their tax dollars were going towards. And so that really reminds me and tells me that we need to do a better job at really making it more clear to our residents kind of what we're doing with their tax dollars and the budget. And obviously, the budget is more complicated than the library millage in a lot of ways, but we still can do a better job in that way. So that kind of, it's more of a comment, but that did strike me, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor. And to follow on, Mayor Proton Brooks, and her comment is, it was interesting. I'll start with an observation and go to a question. But it's really interesting that it looks like 66% of respondents said they would be willing to pay more money, essentially more taxes for things that, for the improvements that they suggested, although we scored very low in the tax area. But it's exactly what Mayor Proton Brooks just said. It's about residents knowing, wanting to know where that money is going. And by saying that they would like to devote it to a particular area, they have a sense of where that would go. And so I think overall for us as council, as we head into the budget season, it says a lot for us and it helps us as we are thinking about how we invest more in community engagement, how we think about communications, and that is incredibly important. The question I wanted to get to for you was around, and it kind of speaks to the question 21 that was asked to residents, which is around kind of the extent to which or how people feel this is a place as inclusive and celebrates diversity. So I wonder if you could speak a little bit more to that because that is something we're also looking at as we head into our budget season.
Sure, so I think this really ties into some of the comments about people valuing the multicultural aspect of Troy. It's a variety of foods, a variety of cultures. I think that is one of the strengths that you really bring that helps differentiate you a bit. And so as you think about where you apply your time, not so much the dollars, but also the staff time, what are some opportunities to kind of build on that to make the diversity of the community something of a superpower that you can then use to continue to build this virtuous cycle and build the score up even more? So when we look at that question, there's a lot of things that people put into it. It's diversity of culture, it could be a diversity of how people identify themselves, diversity of ideas, and how well people are respected even if they disagree with one another. So it's all of those kind of concepts that go into this. But yeah, that's certainly something to keep in mind as you're developing events, as you're developing communication efforts to make sure that we do.
Thank you, Mayor. William, another great presentation, and you gave me enough data to dive into to keep me happy until rapture. So thank you for that. Question for you, I found it very intriguing that understanding that scores just tend to be lower for government and how funds are used and the communication of that. But I found it very striking that we had low scores on that, but 66% of respondents also said they'd be willing to pay more, even if they scored us low on how we communicate, how funds are used. Is that something that you've seen in other communities? Or I found it to be very, almost at cross purposes, those two data points.
Sure. It really does tie in with some of the earlier conversation, that people like to know where the dollars are going. I think there's a prejudice that government wastes money. And so unless they know exactly where the money is going, and you know, you tell them you're CAFER, that doesn't mean people are going to go out and read it. So you need to make sure that you have a communications effort that goes out and gets it in a more packaged, a way that people can digest, because that's the kind of person that opens up the city CAFER and reviews it as different than most normal people. So there's that aspect of just communication, people not being engaged. The other thing is that in this particular question, we asked them to identify things that they would like to see developed, so it's their projects, the things that they want. So in a way, do you want to pay taxes for the things that you want? Yes. But I don't want to pay taxes for the things that everybody else wants, just things that I want. So I think that's an element. I'm oversimplifying this certainly, but I think that dynamic is in there with those two questions.
Very good. And then I guess the next couple of questions I have might be more for staff. I think these results are maybe of interest to Gov HR as we're embracing DEI and getting engagement there. So will these results be passed on to them as well?
Sure, we can do that.
All right. And then the other question I have is the steps that were outlined. Step one, complete, check the box. Do we have any sort of rough estimate for the timing for the subsequent steps?
Yeah, I think the big thing that you'll see moving forward is trying to move our new and improved strategic planning process to the fall. So obviously, you know, budget meetings start on Monday. You'll receive the city manager's proposed budget on Monday. You'll see several of these themes have already been incorporated into that budget. Then over the summer, staff will have time to do some of the work that William described about reflecting on, you know, are these perception gaps or performance gaps? And then when we get back together in the fall for strategic planning, there'll be kind of some more specific discussions there that will feed into the next budget cycle.
City Manager Miller?
Mayor and council, we also have enabled Stephanie Fletcher, our marketing coordinator in our office, to prepare an infographic of the capital projects, which will, it's actually designed very well, and we'll be able to use it, you know, whether it's on our websites or whether you want to use it with residents, it will be available correspondingly when you get the budget.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Hutterick, did you have anything?
Yes, Mayor. Thanks for remembering me up there on the wall there, although I think I'm bigger than you.
Ellen, you're everywhere. You're surrounding us. It's hard to forget you. I mean, you're in stereo. Well, whatever the picture version of that is. Go ahead.
My apologies. I'm so sorry. You're probably your worst nightmare in there. Truly thank you for this great presentation and the information. I think we are all hungry, very hungry to see this, and the value of it is tremendous. One of the things that I was struck by and heartened by, given some of our recent history, frankly, the previous council that was pretty divided, we had some times, was where people were in terms of the professionalism of staff and how that compared to the benchmark. Is that as striking as it hit me? You know, do you ever, do you have some additional observations there to share with us? I'm just, I just really want to say you go staff in spite of us on council and continue to do that, and I was really proud to see that. Again, I'm wondering if you had any further commentary on that.
My main commentary is that doesn't happen accidentally. So that's something that's built up over time, establishing a culture, establishing the right kind of structure for staff, aligning values, the hiring process, all of those things tying into it. And so I think Troy should be congratulated for really performing at such a high level in that key area, because ultimately, it's the staff that are going to drive a lot of these other outcomes. And so to have a great team in place really creates a fantastic foundation for you to really continue to prosper in the future.
Along that same line, seeing our public safety, the police, fire, you know, we've had a myriad of things going on nationally and in the media. I was also very heartened to see the positive responses there. Again, that's a testament to people that came before us, I believe, and something that I guess I don't want to lose sight of, that that's such a strength for us, that staff piece, and a nice place for us to start from. Am I correct?
Totally.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutterick. I am, I'm just going to jump right where you left off, and Chief Nastasi is here tonight, and I was not surprised to see our police be so respected in our community, but it was nice to see it actually, what I, confirm what I already felt and knew. And I thank you, Chief Nastasi, for the work you've done and the work you've done in our community, and you're, everyone at the police department for, I know they go out of their way to go above and beyond, especially in light of what's been happening nationally and we hear. And so I say it a lot, you know, we are one of the reasons people love Troy and want to live in Troy. We know about the schools. Schools are always a given, but the public safety component goes hand in hand with that. I don't think our schools would be as good if our public safety wasn't so strong. And so thank you, chief, and thank everybody at the department for us. I know that we are, I hope they get to see these results too, because I think that their morale could use a boost. You know, I don't have to tell you, but you know. So thank you. And Bill, thank you for another great presentation, and I joked at the beginning when we started talking, I mean, we could talk about this for hours and hours and probably days and days, and I'm advising against that, even though I'm the worst probably. But I do thank you, and I think that it's, to see some of these things, like I confirmed what I kind of felt in the community already, and then to see some other things that are kind of interesting to me, you know, I, City Manager Miller, you brought up Stephanie and the graphics. I was going to say, she does great graphics. I hope the first thing we thought of is, let's make sure she does some infographics. There, I know, actually, I think Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga brought that up several meetings ago about the value of those from, I think, 2017 time period or so. They were very helpful in the community to have those infographics and the budget dollars, and I, they make it easy for us, but it's good for our community and our residents as well. So I'm glad to hear that. I think that's fantastic. And it's, no shocker that communication of how we use our tax dollars and communication in general continues to be a theme that we talk about. And I'm glad we, again, have that confirmed, so we can work towards that and continuing to make progress there. I do want to thank Bob also. I know you've been the survey king this past year in strange times, and we've got another survey in the works too, for the business community, which is great. But I know that these questions and this process takes a lot, so thank you and everyone you've had work with you on this. Obviously, our scores are high, and we look, I mean, now we don't want to screw it up. I mean, right? I mean, we're at a certain level, like, it's going to show, but you know, there's always room for improvement. I think that I, you know, I had a resident tell me several months ago, you know, you seem to talk a lot about their, about, you're always patting yourselves on the back for all the good work you're doing. And, you know, we, I heard that resident very clearly, and yes, I'm proud of the work we do do, but that doesn't mean there's not always the opportunity for us to continue to improve and to grow, and it just makes it harder when the margin to grow is so small. So anyway, that's on us. We'll do that. Finally, the, I think it's fascinating that Trails and Pathways have continued to be the, like, the big hot item for the city, and this goes back years and years, prior to even my time on council. And, you know, I love that we're continuing to work on that. I know we've got, I think the comment period for the phase three of the Trails might have closed today, but I'm looking forward to hearing those results. And I know Kurt Bovin Seep has been working hard on resident engagement as it relates to future Trails, and I just hope that we can, seeing what an important issue it is for our community, we can keep that going, recognizing the challenges we face from space and the issues that come up when we do try to go through neighborhoods, but you can see how much our community is longing for something like that. So I want to make sure that stays a priority. I guess I haven't asked a question for you yet, Bill. Sorry. But I just, I'm really thankful for this. So I, this is a great tool, another tool for us to have as we work towards decision making, and I know, I was also very thankful to hear Assistant City Manager Bruner say as the tease to these results before we got them, that a lot of this stuff was going to play well on this budget presentation that we have next week. So looking forward to that. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, I could sense it in you that you had something more, but I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to you.
Okay, because I was focused on William, but for city management, I think just two quick things was, can we share these results with the Troy School District, given that, you know, there's a lot of information on schools? And I hope we gave them a heads up that it was just part of the benchmark, so we needed to ask these questions. I just, I think it's important we share that, share that with them.
Definitely.
And then secondly, the master plan. So I was thinking all the information around space, downtowns, walkable community, I hope we can share that also with Carly Wartman and incorporate that as we, as we're doing the master plan update work.
Yes. City Manager Miller?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, Bill, what do you recommend as the frequency the communities do the survey?
If I'm looking at my own budget, I think every six months. I would recommend every two to three years. I think that's about the right kind of timeframe, because you need to have time to digest it and actually implement things and get the information out, so people can experience something that's a little bit different. What a lot of communities do is they do, you know, this kind of benchmarking thing, then they rotate. So maybe the next year, they dive in on parks, or they dive in on library, which we've already done. So maybe kind of taking turns where you dive into things a little bit more deeply for a couple of years, and then you zoom back out for this broader picture to see, you know, have the things implemented, have they received traction, and have priorities shifted as the demographics and the environment shifts too.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga read my mind about sharing it with the school district, but I want to make sure we share it with the other school districts in Troy as well, particularly Avondale, which had 41 responses, which is enough to not get the asterisks that, you know, 30 responses required. But Warren also got 24, so I, at the very least, I'd like to see Avondale and maybe Warren also get, you know, be aware of these results and what their impression of Troy residents are, of their school history. That's it.
Anything else from council? All right. Bill, thank you. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Sure, we'll see you again.
Take care. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the late submittal of I-7, Proposed Emergency Declaration Resolution. That'll be presented by City Attorney Lori Gugblum. Take it away, Lori.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you is a proposed resolution, and that is a result of at least a couple of members of city council expressing an interest in doing that because of the recent spike in the number of COVID cases and some of the concerns that have been raised by the governor. Also, the courts, I would just indicate that the courts have reverted back to the safe status as well. Another, other institutions have also been, I guess, downgraded because of security, because of concern, safety concerns. So this is a proposed resolution declaring an emergency. You have to do this in order to continue to have virtual meetings. So if this is not passed, then, then all of the boards and committees, the Open Meetings Act does not allow for virtual meetings. It would allow for the meetings to continue as we have tonight, a hybrid meeting, where members can have, and they can have a medical condition, and that would allow them to participate remotely. But it's a hybrid type of a meeting. So this actually would allow for complete, for everyone to participate in a virtual meeting on all of the board and committees. And I would, there are about 12 meetings in the month of April that are scheduled, including the DDA, the LFA, the BRA, Act 78, Traffic Committee, and of course, council has, I believe, at least four of those meetings. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the council members may have.
Thank you, City Attorney Blum. Any questions from council? Councilmember Erickson-Gol.
Yes. You spoke earlier about the fact that Planning Commission, which is scheduled for tomorrow night and has been advertised as a hearing, would be going forward. What of the other meetings that are currently scheduled for April, are we locked into in-person meetings as of right now?
So I don't know if we've advertised any other public hearings. I'd have to figure that out. The DDA, LFA, Brownfield, those would not be required as long as council passed this declaration. Council meetings, obviously, it's your call, but they are not required to be, you know, going forward in person as long as there is a resolution declaring an emergency.
Assistant City Manager Bruner, are you raising your hand? Sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm looking at the calendar now, and on Wednesday, April 14th, the Employees Retirement System Trust Board meeting's already been canceled, and the Global Troy meeting has been canceled, and there's a meeting on Thursday, the 15th, the Parks and Rec Board, which doesn't have any public hearings advertised, and so that meeting could be, there's enough time to repost it to be online meeting. And I think the same is true for all the meetings of the rest of the month. There's still time to repost those.
Mayor Proton Brooks?
I kind of know the answer to this, but how many other of the cities in Oakland County have declared such an emergency?
Mayor, I think we did some research, and the only two that we found that didn't at the city and village level was Rochester Hills. The rest had.
And us.
And us now.
Right. Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lambert, during public comment, made reference to agenda items being deferred for quite a while, given that we've been holding virtual meetings for approximately a year. By declaring this, if we were to declare an emergency tonight and then begin to shift to virtual meetings, does that automatically mean that some of the agenda topics slated would push out, or could they just be handled in the virtual meetings as scheduled?
City Attorney Blum, that looks like a question for you.
Yeah, it's complicated. Certainly, we have held off for so long because, again, I think it's council's desire to provide the public with as much of an opportunity for input as possible. So there are a number of items which have not gone forward because of the virtual format. Initially, it was because they couldn't go forward unless they were matters of an emergent nature, but that is not necessarily the case anymore since the fall, when the courts have decided that the governor's orders were not controlling. So I'm not sure if that completely answers the question.
City Manager Miller?
The problem with the
nature, but that is not necessarily the case anymore since the fall, when the courts have decided that the governor's orders were not controlling. So I'm not sure if that completely answers the question.
City Manager Miller?
The problem with the Planning Commission, public hearings and meetings, is that they tend to attract a lot of people, which is difficult at this time. And the thing that we've been working with the city attorney on is trying to be able to deliver a public hearing meeting safely and efficiently and meeting the needs of getting the input from the people. So it's been a balance, and, you know, we're trying to get it done. This initial meeting tomorrow will sort of at least address initially four of the big cases that have been waiting around. Also, we have some cases that need, zoning cases that need to come to city council for a public hearing. So we're working on how to get that done in this COVID era, which is kind of difficult. But of course, the big concern is, is if we had 100 people in this room, what do we do? And we have been doing stuff. I don't know, we have, Bob has sort of spearheaded all this technology you see tonight, but we are prepared, if we need to, to have public comment at the community center where there's big space and spacing, and have them video and audio in. You know, we're trying to work that out to make sure it happens, because the concern is those planning and zoning items can attract a lot of people.
Assistant City Manager Booner?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about some of the plans that we've made, to use the large rooms in the community center for where people can come and make comments in person. That's still a possibility with an emergency and with the Board or Commission being completely online. Obviously, you know, you've all been in electronic meetings for the last year, and if we go back to that, that doesn't prevent us from also having a computer in the community center where people could come and make comments there. So we have several different ways that we can, well, also, we've switched platforms. We're using Zoom tonight. In the past, we were using GoToMeeting. Part of the reason for that is that Zoom gives us some better functionality that we need and want. So if we, if an emergency is declared and meetings are held completely electronically, it doesn't necessarily mean they will be the same as they were before. There's other ways and other tools that we have for public participation as we go along. Certainly, you know, while cases are still at their all-time high, I wouldn't necessarily encourage, you know, big gatherings at the community center, but we have more options as we move forward.
Councilmember, thanks, Bob. Chamberlain Krangar?
Thank you for that. And to City Manager Miller's point that he just made is that I wonder if it could be possible for city administration to provide a couple of different options or some research of how other municipalities are holding hearings? For example, I know that there are cities that are finding some creative ways to still hold their public hearings, so you're not keeping at bay developers and others that have important issues they need to do, but they're finding some creative ways on Planning Commission and City Council. And I just would love to see, what are those options? Could there be a couple bullets of some different things that we could pursue? So it's not black or white. Right now, I feel it's either you declare a state of emergency and you have to cancel these important hearings, or you don't. And I'd like to think that there's something in the middle that could be done. So just kind of a question, I don't know if there could be consensus or, but just, I personally would love to see some of the different options, because I do know other municipalities are doing other things.
Mayor, I think we are getting to the point internally that we can start to formalize, you know, these new optional ways in which we can deliver the meeting. So I think we can sort of fulfill what you're looking for in the near future.
One other quick question is, I noticed in the draft here, resolution, that we are expected to revisit it on May 10th. So in a sense, it kind of expires, we have to on May 10th revisit, and I think it makes sense to do that. I think one question I wanted to ask is, is there a way to tie a state of emergency to metrics, to what's going on in the community in some way? And maybe by having it set that you must revisit it, it's a way to do that. I'm thinking what Emily's doing in the library, I think of a lot of us, what we're doing in our workplaces, that all of that planning is tied to metrics of community spread and hospitalizations and all of those different variables. So it'd be nice to be able to let people know that we're making a decision based on, just putting on my evaluation hat, it's based on some metrics of what's going on around us.
City Attorney Blum?
As far as the metrics, obviously, that is something that council will be considering, and I would encourage you to use metrics of other entities to, you know, in your decisions. I did set it for review in May. I know that that's quick, but again, the, you know, the Open Meetings Act right now, unless there is a declaration of an emergency, you are required to have in-person meetings. And the state legislature is encouraging in-person meetings. So again, by having a shorter period of time, I think you are staying true to providing for open meetings, but yet being aware of the metrics and the concerns that are, for safety.
Councilmember Ericson-Gol?
Yes, and noting in here that in the paragraph, the first one that says, "Be it further resolved, that a result of this emergency declaration, the city may continue to take additional measures, et cetera, et cetera, including virtual meetings." Is there something in addition to this that we would have to do to be able to make the decision whether we would be in-person or virtual for us or for various boards or committees? Or would this automatically result in all further meetings being virtual?
So the default is that they would be virtual. There may be, the exception would probably be the Planning Commission meeting, although I don't, you know, that's something that probably, and that's why it says wherever possible. That's why that language is in there.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question about the May 10th aspect of it. Is the presumption that that May 10th meeting would be virtual? And we decide at that virtual May 10th meeting whether or not to continue this order?
So that is your budget hearing night. That is the night of your budget hearing, and so if it is safe, that might be something that, that should be something that you should consider, is that you may want to make sure that you're providing the greatest access to the public.
Mark?
It is a public hearing. The budget meeting night's a public hearing.
Okay. When and how would we communicate that? That is the question I have. I've struggled with that with this resolution coming up after a three-week break and a weekend flurry of information. But how would we, would we have to tell you at the April 26th meeting that we would want to move forward in person by May 10th for the public hearing? Or what, how would that work? Those are my, because that, suddenly, that's only two weeks from now, and things might not look noticeably different enough in two weeks where they would in three weeks, as we've seen the past three weeks. So I'm, the process and procedure here is what concerns me a little bit.
I would need to look at the public hearing notice for the budget. I don't know if it's actually been sent out yet or not. And so that would actually be, that would, that's dispositive as far as whether or not it's going to be an in-person hearing or a virtual hearing.
I saw City Clerk Dixon nodding her head. I don't know if she was...
I'm looking for it right now.
Okay. Then my other question that follows from that is, is there a Planning Commission meeting on May 11th that would then have the same issues? I would not want to get to May 10th and have public hearings already announced for May 11th for Planning Commission. I don't have their schedule in front of me. I guess I'm just trying to...
Mr. Mayor, their, their public hearings would not be scheduled yet.
Okay.
It would be too far out to actually advertise them. I mean, that's not to say that they're not penciled in in their office, but I think we're far enough out that they wouldn't be set. So that's yet to be determined.
I guess I, I'm just a little unclear on, it says that the declaration only terminates through affirmative action of council. We have limited opportunity to meet and do that. So I, while I understand the, I understand the need, and I can talk a little bit about that later, but the concern is, this is a, this is a serious action to me, and I want to make sure that if we're doing it, we're doing it with a clear understanding of how we're getting out of it and what our plan is for our public and the, I mean, years-plus of projects that need to be looked at and such, based on, you know, we received that sheet fairly recently with all of the things of the Planning Commission that are ready for us. So I know you understand what I'm saying, and you're nodding, so go ahead.
No, I do, and again, there, if a public hearing has already been advertised for the budget and it is advertised as being in-person, we need to make sure that we could meet the deadlines that are required for public hearing notices and get that posted if we're going to have a change to that. So that's why, again, the language was drafted this weekend. I didn't have a whole lot of time to draft it, and I'm hoping that it meets, I don't even know if it meets what council's desires are. I'm hoping that it does. It's proposed for your consideration. This is your resolution.
And I should note, I know this was a weekend project, and I appreciate that and understand, so I, full, full thanks and gratitude for that. I guess that that is an extra reason for me to be concerned as to that we're doing it. Right. City Clerk Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the public hearing notice for the budget goes tomorrow to the paper, so it has not been sent to the paper, has not been published yet. And on the annual notice of meetings for City Council that was published at the end of last year, it indicated that the special budget discussion would be held at 6:00 in the boardroom or as otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Procedure, which would include the amendments that we made in order to have virtual meetings.
Okay. Those are next week's budget meetings? Is that what you're talking about?
The, I'm sorry, for the public, I'm sorry, for, yes, for next week's budget meetings. But the, all the meetings that were published at the end of the year include those, that language about amendments. So the meeting is fine, and then the public hearing itself has not been sent yet. The notice for that has not been sent.
So if we were to declare this emergency tonight, would that notice that needs to go tomorrow be amended or to say that it...
Yes.
Even though we're not certain that it would be virtual on the May 10th meeting? I guess that's my, I guess I'm still trying to just understand what we're doing with that aspect of it, so we know...
We're required to publish it twice before the public hearing, so it would have to, it would go tomorrow, and we would include all the language that was required to, you know, show whether it was going to be a virtual meeting or an in-person meeting, that it would occur, that the public hearing is going to occur on this date. The place and time would, you know, it would depend on what council does tonight, whether it would be virtual or not.
And at our April 26th meeting, regular meeting? I guess I'm just, go ahead. City Attorney Blum?
So, I mean, if council wants to have more time, if you want to make it very clear that you want this emergency declaration first and foremost, and secondly, that you want it to extend beyond the May 10th date, and that you want the budget to be heard, the public hearing for the budget to be heard in a virtual meeting, then we, this resolution can be modified. You could strike the language about the, you know, revisiting it at the May, you could strike that paragraph completely.
I, that's not my concern. It's not that I'd want to extend it. I want to know when we're going to end it. And I don't want us to get hung up on something that, I mean, listen, we've been meeting virtually for a year, so I'm very familiar with those, with that process, and I think our community's familiar with it as well. I just don't want us to be lacking the ability to make, I mean, we're not a nimble body because we only meet semi, or, you know, not so often. So I just want to make sure we're clear and recognizing there's going to be a cutoff point where, no matter what, May 10th meeting's going to have to be virtual, because we're not going to have enough time to change the notice again based on our meeting schedule. So I, I don't know the solution to that. I think what I'm hearing is there's not really a great solution, other than so long as we meet the public notice requirements, which I think is the number-one priority. I do have a, I don't want to extend this aspect any longer than necessary, knowing that we've already pushed off a lot of very important public hearing issues, as long as we had, but any other questions, I guess? Councilmember Hamilton?
I don't really have a question. It's just the COVID spiking numbers right now are just stunning and horrifying. I mean, I want to default to virtual meetings right now for the next month or two. I mean, I have no question about that. I think it's...
I guess I just don't know. I'm sorry.
You know, it's okay. To protect residents, to protect staff that hasn't been vaccinated. I mean, unfortunately, I got vaccinated, but a lot of people, I don't know who has, and I don't want to put them at risk. I mean, I want to get our public hearings done and our business done, and if they've been delayed too long, we may just have to do them in a virtual format. Like what Councilmember Chamberlain Krangar said, let's look at what other municipalities are doing. If there's good examples of effective public engagement in a virtual environment, let's do it. If there's ways that we can communicate with the residents in the nearby areas to make sure they know, they can give a phone call, they can send an email, they can communicate with us directly and get responses. I'm fine with that, but this is, I mean, I remember this, earlier today, I checked, Beaumont periodically sends us a few times a week updates on their hospitalization numbers, and every, so we get that maybe two, three times a week, and every time, I try to see when that spike is finally coming down, coming down. And when I saw it this morning, it just jumped up again, and I, that was so horrifying to me, like, we can't bring people here. We have to go virtual until that comes down significantly. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that I don't want that budget hearing to be in-person. We're not going to be, I don't think we're going to be there in a month.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with the concerns of today. My concerns are, how can we say if there's an emergency in mid-May that we don't know about? That's where I'm, I'm struggling with how to properly put an end on this, knowing notice requirements and such. I spoke with the COO of Beaumont today about this, because I was very concerned. And I said, okay, if I'm going to make a decision about an emergency order that's not specifically tied to a county or state order, like it was a year ago when we did it, I want to know what I'm getting myself into. And yeah, the numbers are horrifying. I mean, we've got a positive, a COVID-positive rate, testing rate of 16 to 22%, in Oakland County, Wayne County, and McComb County, which is very high. They're approaching their biggest numbers of the surges that they've had in the past. I should say, and, you know, don't be afraid to go to the hospital if you need to. They can handle you, and they're prepared for you, and I don't want anyone to think that, and they're very cautious with that information. And they are approaching their critical area, and their emergency, our emergency operation center's activated. So I mean, there's definitely an emergency today, and I'm, I just want to make sure that, because this is unique for us, that we are getting the best product and making the most sense. So those are my, that's where my questions are coming from. Listen, I, I mean, we're fortunate, there's nobody here tonight, right? I mean, but Planning Commission tomorrow night, I suspect there's going to be people here, and it's going to be a different thing, and, you know, I don't unnecessarily want to put anybody in our community at risk, anybody in our city staff at risk, certainly any of us, any of the planning commissioners and the board and committee members, I understand. I, but I always want to measure that against, you know, it's hard to make decisions, like I said, about what's going to be an emergency in six weeks, or, you know, we just don't, we don't know. And so I want to make sure that we can, knowing how our lack of nimbleness, we're able to make a decision that is going to be able to be quickly unwound when necessary. Not that we couldn't, if we had an extra virtual meeting, it's not the end of the world. I understand that as well. Those are my, that's my thought for the moment. Councilmember Hodorick, I know you haven't said much, but then I forget to... Councilmember Hodorick, I know you haven't said much, I forget to look up on the screen, but go ahead.
We've been functioning and handling things virtually for a year. We are in another dangerous situation. I think our public wants to be able to participate in our process safely. It's ideal when we can meet in person. It is. But first and foremost is safety. I mean, we just saw that in our scoring, you know, in the survey. Yes, it's police, it's fire, but it's also a philosophy of being a safe city on multiple levels. We have a responsibility to make sure that residents can give input to their governance, which need, our governance needs to continue. And I think we need to just err on the side with what we know now, and what is likely to proceed for the next several weeks at least, to do that virtually, to be able to engage with us virtually. They did last fall on a couple of topics that were very serious, you know, considerations for our residents, where they called in their comments to us. We all know, our residents, we as a council, we all know what the numbers are out there, and what we need to do to help stop the spread. So, it just seems to make sense to me to err on the side of safety. We can still put that May 10, at the same time, we can do a virtual budget hearing on May 10. We can decide that night if we can stop meeting virtually, or can be back in person. But I don't understand why we wouldn't just err on the side with what we know now of staying virtual. I think the residence for tomorrow night on the Planning Commission, we need to make it known, if that meeting is proceeding, and that decision-making is proceeding, and I would argue that it should, that they can participate virtually, that they can give their input, share their thoughts via email or call-in, just like folks did tonight for We want their input, and we set it up so that it can be done virtually, so that we keep people safe. The idea of 50 or 70 residents gathering to give input to Planning Commission tomorrow night, or people putting them at risk because they feel so strongly, so they feel like they have to come in person, that just belies keeping, it belies the logic of the advice that we're getting out there. So, I think we can keep May 10 in there, and we can also say, we're going to have a virtual budget hearing. If that night we want to not close the hearing that night, and allow for it in person at the next meeting, I mean, there must be the ability for us to be that agile. And all along, we need to just communicate with the people we represent, that we're continuing to represent them, and we want their input via email, via phone calls, that we welcome their engagement, and we welcome it safely and virtually. Just because it's virtual doesn't mean their voices can't be heard. I guess that's where I'm at. And the language in the, in this proposed resolution still makes sense then, and the notification can go out tomorrow accordingly. We're in unprecedented times. None of us saw these numbers coming at us this way. All of us wanted to meet in person. We just can't. It's the reality. That's how I see it.
Excellent. City Clerk Dixon?
I just wanted to point out that in the Planning Commission public hearing notice that was published, there's a paragraph that reads, "In the event that the meeting cannot be held in person for any reason, including but not limited to legislation limiting in-person meetings or a declared state of emergency, the meeting shall be held remotely via remote meeting platform." Then it goes on to say that any necessary logistical changes will be posted on the city website, and it gives the URL, and persons can also contact the Planning Department for verification. So, we can put similar language into the public hearing notice for the budget, and then provide the budget website and contact information for the clerk's office, so that would make it so that people could contact us if they, you know, if we needed it, or if we made any changes, they'd be able to ask questions or look it up on the website.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure, though, the Open Meetings Act also requires 18 hours of notice, advance notice. So, we don't have that 18 hours bef, well, actually, maybe we do if, actually, we don't. Well, it's going to be very close, you know, to the 18 hours. So, so that's something, too, that for tomorrow night's meeting, if it is, you know, we do need to make sure that we are getting notice posted as quickly as possible.
So, to the public comment that came in earlier, those particular people, they weren't asking for the meeting to be virtual, they didn't seem satisfied with being able to submit virtual public comment, which I can understand in one respect, but after receiving virtual public comment for a year, I know differently, that we actually maybe absorb it even better in a sense, because we're hearing it or reading it, and it's a different thing. So, again, to the, to the public, the virtual public comment is very effective. I don't know how to communicate that to residents that it, or communicated enough. I mean, whether it's our city's social media bombarding, I mean, to the point of, this is, this is a great way to do it, this is what we're expecting even, I mean, I think that would help and go a long way. And I also recognize that not everybody's going to be happy all the time regardless. There's going to be people that think we've gone too far, and think that we haven't gone far enough. So, I understand that as well. City Attorney Bloom, just as a follow-up, are you saying we have the ability to change tomorrow night's Planning Commission meeting?
Again, as long, and we did draft that language some time ago, and we specifically did draft that language to provide some flexibility, but there is an 18-hour in advance requirement that, under the Open Meetings Act, so if it is going to be virtual, it will need to be posted 18 hours in advance of the meeting. The other thing I would just mention is that with the, one of the reasons why the Planning Commission items, in addition to the number of persons that some of those items are likely to, to generate for public participation, with the Planning Commission items, a lot of times, you will have the presentation first. The virtual comment, the way that it's set up, you have to have your comment in before the presentation. And so, that's one of the reasons why we've been conservative in saying, you know, let's, let's try and hold off on these items, so that people really do have the benefit of seeing the entire presentation to know what it is, because a lot of times, our public does not necessarily get all of the details in advance of the meeting. So, that's just another thing to keep in mind. So, yes, it is possible, but some of these items are likely to generate a lot of public participation, and also, the way that our public comment is set up, it is, it is different than how we normally would handle our planning items.
So, my, I'm sorry, but my obvious question coming from that, and I know you love it when we ask questions from the table that get a little dicey, but about process, is there the ability to formalize a plan with Planning Commission public hearings, or council public hearings, that allows for a more conducive manner to obtain that public comment after the hearing, whether that's over two meetings? Or is there some other method that allows, that would satisfy your concerns, your legal concerns relating to that, and also give the people who would like to make the comment the opportunity to hear the full presentation before having to make a public comment?
Absolutely. You know, it, the action does not have to be taken at a meeting. It can be tabled and then brought back at a next meeting. It would not require the public hearing notice to do that. So, that is, that is a way of accomplishing the same thing, that, you know, if that's something that council wanted to do, and if that's something that the Planning Commission were interested in.
So, but we can't mandate that Planning Commission does that? So, they would have to take that upon themselves. Could we ask that they be advised of that option, based on our?
They, well, certainly, they're aware of that. I'm sure that Ms. Dufresne, who is the Assistant City Attorney who will be handling it, she's watching this meeting tonight, I'm sure that she will also be communicating that we've talked about it as, as, you know, an idea. But, you know, again, it's not as efficient, you're not getting your decisions, you've got a lot of these developers who've been waiting for quite some time, and they've been pressuring for a decision. It is going to prolong those decisions.
Someone want to move a resolution, or ask another question? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll just move the resolution just to get it on the floor. I'll move I-7 Proposed Emergency Declaration Resolution as printed in the late semittal.
Support?
Is that Ann?
Yep.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Erickson-Gault, that we approve I-7 Proposed Emergency Declaration Resolution as printed in the late semittal of the agenda packet. Discussion, Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if we approve this resolution, how can we, because personally, I want the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow to be virtual. So, what can we, is that just a city manager action? Do we have to pass a resolution, or have a council consensus to direct that action, or how would that work?
We'll need the posting to occur tonight.
Right. What would it take for that posting to be generated?
That's administrative.
You don't need us to say, please do that? Okay. That's your question, right?
Yeah. No, that's what I like to see.
Additional discussion? Just to follow up on that, I'm not comfortable passing this and agreeing this, if Planning Commission's then coming back in this chamber tomorrow night and having a meeting in person, it seems to me that that would be counterproductive. So, I would very much hope and encourage that within the limited time period that notice gets posted. Otherwise, to me, it seems, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right. So, did you, Mayor Protem Brooks?
Well, I was just going to kind of give my personal thoughts. So, obviously, for me, being a healthcare professional, being a physician, I am fully vaccinated. I've been vaccinated since the beginning of January, and that does give me personally a sense of comfort, I guess. But knowing that, I mean, the general public, the majority of the general public is not. The last I heard, maybe about 25% of Michiganders are fully vaccinated, which is two weeks after your last shot. And so, you know, right now, we're really in a race against kind of this variant that is predominating, which is, makes people, it's more contagious, and it seems like it's making people sicker. And we see this in the rise in, you know, the hospital rates, and the rise in people getting sick. And obviously, we are in the midst of a spike in COVID cases, as we all, as we all can see. And the, and right now, we haven't even plateaued, and the numbers are just as bad or worse as they were in November, December. So, you know, I did express concerns about this, and I was hoping that by now, we'd be in a better place, but clearly, you know, it's not looking like it. And so, you know, I think if we want to consider kind of the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and our community as a whole, I think the best thing to do is to pass the resolution, because we do not want to be a source of potential spread of COVID to our residents. We don't want our residents to get sick. We don't want our staff to get sick that have to be here. So, for those reasons, I will be approving it, but this is a reminder, obviously, that this is more, this is a temporary pause. Obviously, the goal is to get back to in-person meetings, and I want us to do so as soon as it is safe to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brooks. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes, I also just prepared a few remarks as well. And I think the reason why, just to share with the public, it looks a little messy, is we just haven't had a chance really to deliberate about this as a body. And I think partly, I was under the impression that there wasn't a lot of options, that Lansing had not passed legislation, that a state of emergency, and maybe roughly so a month ago, was not appropriate when people are out in restaurants and out and about. And then, thirdly, like the need to address these Planning Commission matters, which I'm, I'm very interested in hearing some other options, because I know other communities are doing them. And I just, I have to be honest, I wish it had been a little clearer before, that we could have actually deliberated a little bit more as a body about this, because I think it's very important, and of course, to hear the input from the public about it. And in any case, with the state of emergency, I think it is only appropriate, given the governor's ask, it wasn't a mandate, but her ask, that we seek to avoid restaurants, that we be careful about our gatherings in indoor spaces. And one of the data points that I'll just pull is that it says, "In the past four weeks, the seven-day average number of new cases of COVID-19 in Michigan has increased nearly We know that in the New York Times, we were called out, the state of Michigan, as being out of control in terms of our cases. And thirdly, I would just point out, I heard today at work, the comment that 70% of the cases in the hospital are actually from the variants. So, this is a variant. That is the game changer. That is what has changed in the past month. It has been steadily rising. And we do, we get daily data from Beaumont, and we see that peak, and that peak is higher than what that peak was, even going back to December and November. So, for all those reasons, and I even think of our children, and I'm very prepared that it makes sense for children who are in school to come home during this period of time. And I do say, though, even in that environment, where some children, they need to learn in person, that they're in a very controlled, and I speak for young children, they're in a very controlled environment, where they're in cohorts, they're not intermingling with people outside of the cohorts, they have contact tracing on buses, so they're very controlled, and there's cleaning going on. And I also think of all of the work that we're asking of staff, from, from the cleaning to other necessities, that can also, you know, it can be an expense involved by having all these, these meetings in place. And so, I just, I think overall, because of that, and also, I think we probably saw today that the governor spoke, that MIOSHA is going to extend the period of time in which it is recommending that if you can work from home, if an employer can allow that, that you, that the strong, strong ask is that any in-person work is prohibited, and that's going to extend another, another six months, and partly, you know, given the environment going on. And so, I think, given that, MIOSHA, this is our Michigan occupational safety and health entity saying that, is that I have to support a state of emergency just for the health, welfare, and safety of our community, our staff, and everyone around us.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. The nature of an emergency is that it occurs out of nowhere, it's unpredictable, and the timeframe for it is unknown. If we had wanted this meeting to be virtual, we would have had to have voted on it at our last meeting, which I believe was March 15. Inherently, on March 15, we could not have forecasted where we are today with the spike. And so, I'm saying this to give our residents some context of why, why we're physically here today, and why we're figuratively here today. We would have had to have predicted where we are today three weeks ago, voted on it. And heaven knows, if you had asked me three weeks ago, where numbers were not great, I would have said, we can turn it around. I'm not ready to go there yet. Maybe. Hindsight's 2020. Well, we do know what we know today, and it's not good, and the spike keeps going We don't know when that spike is going to go down. We don't know when it's going to hit a low enough point where we're all comfortable. We don't know when it's going to plateau at that low point. And so, now, we're in the position of needing to take several factors into account. Some of it's the governor's strong suggestion, some of it's from the medical community. We have Mayor Protem Brooks certainly seeing this on the front lines. I have immediate family members who are also on the front lines, and the numbers are staggering in terms of volume, and who's entering the hospitals, and who's in the ICU. It's younger folks, and it's being transmitted through kids, which had not been an issue Gatherings or events that have the potential to gather people are just not responsible right now. And I say this with all due seriousness... And I say this with all due seriousness. At the same time, I'm looking at my colleagues, who I have not seen in person for over a year, and for whom I recognize there is value in being in person and having the in-person interaction. It is by far the preferred state. It's just, right now, not the responsible course of action, as much as I would love to see my colleagues and staff. In the past week, the Easter holiday occurred for those who celebrate. And for me, it's always a time of reflection. And part of that reflection is on sacrifice, which is the meaning behind the holiday. And inherently, sacrifice means doing something you don't necessarily like to do. And I don't necessarily like to do virtual meetings. I like to see people. However, I too would be supporting this resolution because it is, because it is the right thing to do. And it's certainly not a situation that will go on indefinitely. I think we have the right tools in terms of the vaccinations. It's just, it takes times to get the vaccination, and then to get, it takes time for the vaccines to be fully enacted within your body. So I'm not looking at this as an extension for another year. I'm looking at this as an extension, maybe for weeks or a few, a couple more months. And certainly, we can talk about it on May 10th, and if the numbers look low and plateaued, maybe, maybe we'll come back to in-person. But I'm not wise enough, and I certainly don't have a good enough crystal ball to predict that. And certainly, if I did, I'd be buying a lot more Lotto tickets. So I think it's only prudent to, to proceed with this emergency action.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Erickson-Gault?
Yes. I, I, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, first of all, comment that I share a little bit with you, your concern about the, there's an, there's a reason why we have an Open Meetings Act, and that is to allow public participation, public input, public being able to view a meeting. When the OMA was passed many, many years ago, is that flexibility, if, if the members of the planning commission so decide, they have that ability to receive the comment to, that was given in advance, hear the presentation, and if they so choose, they can, and correct me if I'm wrong, they can postpone the action on it to the next meeting. And, and I, I support what Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga suggested, that we look at ways that we can have more robust, real-time participation by the public in a virtual setting. And the reason is because everything we're saying, and I'm not going to reiterate everything that was said, we have got to protect the public, we've got to protect the city staff. We have members of staff that have to physically be here. We, we have chosen to take on this responsibility as members of council. This is their job, and they have to physically be there. We're putting them all at risk, and they, not all of them have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Vaccinations are no panacea. I read recently, there was well over 200 cases in the state of Michigan confirm COVID infections after full vaccination. So this virus is crazy dangerous, and so we need to do everything we can to protect people. Our CDC director said, what Michigan should do is shut everything down, which I'm sure, you know, from a practical perspective, we understand that's not going to happen. But I think we should take her advice to heart and shut it down as much as we can. And where we can do things virtually, we should definitely do things virtually. For instance, we should follow the example of our schools. Our school system has recently stated that standardized testing, which was supposed to happen this week, is now an opt-in. So parents like me can choose to say, I don't want my teenage daughter to be, who has been going to school virtually since last March, to suddenly be exposed to a potential super-spreader event. And I, you know, I, when I caution that, I know Troy School District will work really hard to make that testing as safe as possible, but you can't fail-safe it when it's happening in person. So I just think, given all of the circumstances of what we're dealing with, and the fact that we can satisfy the essential purpose of the Opens Meeting Act, Open Meetings Act, by giving people the opportunity to participate, giving people the opportunity to observe, giving people the opportunity to petition their government, we should err on the side of caution. We should, you know, let's go virtual as much as possible until these numbers are back down to, to a level where we can be sure that the public, that the staff, is all protected from this potentially deadly virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson-Gault. Councilmember Hoderek or Hamilton? You haven't said much. Okay. All right, listen, I appreciate everyone's comments and perspective, and city staff's diligence over the weekend, and working on the city attorney bloom. I know, I know you don't take this lightly, and in working to put this together for us, you've, you've done a lot, and I know that we're also giving you likely the task of getting a notice published soon. So I, I will be as short as possible right here. I, I can't say enough how much the health, safety, and welfare of our community matters to me as the mayor of the city, as a resident of the city, as a father of three kids in this city, and a husband to a wife in the city, I mean, a business owner, I mean, there's, obviously, that's gotta be, if we have no other job, that should be our, our number one job. And I, I do think it's important to ask the questions and have the discussion that we've had tonight, because it's important that, one, our community members know that we aren't taking this lightly, this isn't a rash decision based on some press conference coming out of Lansing. This is something that we've thought about, and have tailored it specifically to what the city of Troy needs, our residents need, our boards and committee members need, our city staff needs. And I also, I, I also recognize that even if our meetings are virtual, there's a lot of city staff who still is working in person and has to because of the nature of their jobs, whether that's public safety, whether that's public works, whether that's people in our assessing office here at City Hall, I'm sure there's some people working in the clerk's office occasionally as well. I mean, they're, you know, unfortunately, this doesn't address those issues, and we recognize them for the sacrifices they're doing and what they have to, to deal with every day, and the risks they're facing just by them being here. And I'm, I'm very confident that we can put together a plan that does allow for the increased real-time public comment, if necessary, for public hearings. I have no problem planning to go virtual through May 10th, as long as it's addressed May 10th, as expected by this resolution. I also think we should discuss it April 26th, or at least have some under, in two weeks, we might have a better picture of, just kind of, no, I don't think it's a bad thing to talk about. But, you know, the reality is, I, I did, when I talked to the folks at Beaumont today, it is very real, and I know that there's been a lot of politiz, 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 I can't say it, a lot of partisanship and political issues related to this virus, you know, but the hospital, I can tell you, isn't, isn't making things up. They're concerned, they have real-world concerns. I've got a doctor to my right. I trust your opinion too, and I know that you faced it, and I know that you take it very seriously. I want to briefly say, before we vote, what this resolution, an emergency declaration, is not. It doesn't relate to any private businesses. We're not taking any affirmative action as to what should be open or shouldn't be open. That's not our role, that's not what this is about. This is very specifically related to virtual meeting ability and what we can do as a board or as a council to, to keep our residents safe. So I don't want that to be lost, because I think that's an important aspect of it. I think that's it. I appreciate the conversation we've had. I know it's been long, and I know that real-time questions sometimes can be difficult, so I appreciate the responses. And with that, I will call for the vote from Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson-Gault?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes. Motion carries. Do we need a quick break? Five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break, we'll come back and finish out the public portion of the meeting before we go to a closed session. So five-minute recess. We're back. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody like to pull anything, an item, for further consideration this evening? No? Councilmember Abraham?
Yes, I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda, including late-submitting J3C as printed. Support.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Mayor Protam Brooks, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet, including late-submitting J3C. Any discussion? Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
Just, real quickly, I know all items are always important on the consent agenda. Want to call out J04A, which is around the 4G survey equipment upgrade. So as I was talking to my dad in our Sunday night talk, he is a land surveyor, and he was confirming that 3G is basically, it's going out of existence. So the equipment would be obsolete very soon, and that absolutely, you need to, it's very essential. And so, you know, just very happy that city staff had this great foresight to move to this equipment, and he affirmed, Leica is very much the gold standard, the way to go in terms of equipment. So just thank our city staff for being on the forefront of those changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Motion carries, all items on the consent agenda are approved. Next up is memorandums and future council agenda items, there aren't any this evening. I believe we handled all public comment in Section F, or City Clerk Dixon, was there additional public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, I read and played all of the public comment during the first portion.
Thank you, which means there's no further response. No council referrals this evening. Next are reports, are there any comments on the reports or questions? All right. Council comments. We don't talk much on this council, so. Anything else? Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
I just wanted to share briefly, this was also in the Troy Times, but just a call-out that April is Financial Literacy Month, and Oakland County, Michigan Works, and we have an office here in Troy, is hosting a series of different financial wellness workshops that are in partnership with the Federal Reserve. We know that the pandemic has been both a health and an economic crisis, so just encourage folks to check out, check out those resources. You can check the Troy Times from last week, or just Google Oakland County, Michigan Works online.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned earlier that I was fortunate enough to get a vaccine on Friday, Moderna vaccine. I got it through Rite Aid, and I just want to recommend residents, get vaccinated as soon as you can. The sooner you're vaccinated, the sooner the risk to you and your friends and family is reduced as well. I had limited side effects, some people have more, some people have less, I didn't have much. But I'm just grateful to scientists and researchers who made this miracle happen in such a short amount of time. I think we really don't appreciate how incredible these vaccines are. I know Councilmember Eric Sangal mentioned people getting COVID after getting vaccinated, but it's something like 99% plus, people don't get hospitalized and don't get, die from COVID after getting the vaccine, and don't even get an infection. So they're incredible vaccines, please get them as soon as you can. You can go through Rite Aid, Meyer, CVS, Walgreens, there's a super site at Ford Field, you can go register through Oakland County or local health center, Beaumont, Henry Ford, they're out there, and country's getting over 4 million a day. Let's get it done and get this pandemic defeated finally.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Additional council comments? Just a reminder that we have two budget meetings next week that'll now be virtual. The public can participate, same way we've been participating with public comment, email publiccomment@troymi.gov, or via voicemail, 248-524-3302. We do greatly value with public comment that comes to us. As I said earlier, I think we sometimes even absorb it a little better when it comes to us in the form it's been, because we're, well, maybe we're so happy to have human interaction, but it's nice to have it, and we appreciate it. And certainly, as it relates to our budget, I said earlier, health, safety, and welfare is the most important thing we can do, followed with a close second by the budget, that's our other main objective on this council. So we did get some good results from our survey, as far as priorities, but we're always, always eager and happy to hear from our residents about where they think their tax dollars should be going, and certainly, I pledge, and I know we all will, to be good communicators of where those tax dollars are going, as a takeaway from earlier. So, next week, Monday and Thursday evenings, the Times, are they 6 o'clock or are they 7:30?
Six o'clock.
Doesn't say. I just want to make sure I...
Mayor, it's 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, that's what I thought. All right. So with that, again, thank you to our healthcare workers, heroes, frontline responders, frontline workers, public safety, public works, grocery store employees, everybody who was out there providing us with the services that we need, and keeping us healthy and safe and well-fed, and all the things we appreciate in this country and city. And with that, we do have a closed session, so I will recess into closed session, and we'll adjourn from there.